I'm gonna go ahead and, we're gonna report out on our closed session.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The council was briefed on all five items. No reportable action was taken on any item, and all five items will be continued to the next meeting of the council in, I believe, three weeks. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Are we ready? Oh, okay, I'm gonna go ahead and adjourn the special meeting, and now I will call to order our city council regular meeting for June 18th, 2019. Can I get a roll call, please?
Yes. Councilmember Mann?
Here.
Councilmember Sternquist?
Here.
Councilmember Yu?
Here.
Mayor Potem Chavez?
Here.
Mayor Fish?
Here. Okay. Moving on to number three, our invocation. We're gonna have Pastor Daryl Kelty from Community of Christ Church, which is at 9468 Broadway, will provide the invocation. And after you stand, please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. We will be led by Troop 161. Senior Patrol Leader Jared Dew will be the caller for the Pledge of Allegiance. Scouts presenting the flags are Duncan Verara, Joshua Hsu, Daniel Hsu, and Jason Dong. Troop 161 will be serving their Hawaiian shaved ice to make money for campership funds for scouts at the Temple City Concerts in the Park beginning this Wednesday. Please come out and support the troop. Thank you.
O divine creator, we your children are gathered here together this evening to conduct the business of this, the city of Temple City. We do so in order that this community might become an even better community than it already is. We know that this will not be an easy task, but one we are willing to accept upon ourselves because of our future generations. When one considers the problems and the difficulties we face, we need all the help we can get. We know that this is not something we can do alone or on our own, but we need your support and guidance. This is, for this reason, we offer this prayer to you this evening. May we, Lord, see the world around us and this community as your divine creations, as we are, and we are to be its caregivers. We know that this is not something that we can do with or without your help and guidance. Therefore, let this be our prayer this evening, that through what you do here tonight, tomorrow and the following day, and the day after that, we may tap into your directions, and we might leave this community a better generation, where we might be, people might live in harmony, one with another. Thus we pray in all humility and thanks. Amen.
Call guard, attention. Call guard, front and center. Call guard, forward march. Oh, please post the flag of the United States of America. Please post a California state flag. All those in uniform and veterans, please salute. All those not in uniform, please place your right hand over your heart. Please join in the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual, liberty, and justice for all.
Two. Call guard, reform. Call guard, retreat. Oh. Call guard, dismiss. The audience may now be seated.
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. We're gonna move on now to ceremonial matters. Introduction of Temple City Sister Cities Exchange Students. I would like to introduce Nancy Terry, who will introduce the students.
It gives me great pleasure to be here tonight because I get to introduce our six Temple City students who will be traveling to Australia in July. We send six sophomores, or after their sophomore year every year, and Australia sends us six students. I will actually let the kids introduce themselves and tell us all one thing that they are looking forward to seeing or doing when they go to Australia. But before I do that, I would like to thank the city council. We're very fortunate here in Temple City that we have a city council that supports, strongly supports, the Sister City International Organization here. And we really have such a good time working with the students and working with the Australians, and working with all of our community members, because we do take tours of the city hall, and the sheriff's station, a fire station. So we're very fortunate. We have a lot of great things here in Temple City. Now I'll let the kids introduce themselves.
Hello, my name is Darren Pinedo, and I am really thankful for this once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. Personally, I am looking forward to visiting the Sydney Harbour during my time in Australia, as well as also becoming part of the Ryan family. I would also like to thank the Sister City Committee and the city council for their generous support. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Kaylee Fung, and I would like to thank the city council and anyone basically involved in allowing me to have this unique opportunity. And I think the one thing that I'm mostly looking forward to is meeting my host's family and spending more time with my host's sibling, because she was wonderful, and basically experiencing life over there as a teenager, and comparing it to America. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Faith Wada, and first off, I would like to thank the city council of Temple City and the Sister City of Temple City in Australia for giving me this amazing opportunity. One thing that I am looking forward to doing in Australia is seeing how different the schools are compared to our schools here in America.
Hello, my name is Siraj Shah, and I would be so, I'm so grateful for the city council and Sister City Association for giving us the opportunity to fly to a whole other country. One thing I'm looking forward to in Australia is seeing kangaroos and koalas in person.
Hi, my name is Matthew Kwan. Hi, my name is Matthew Kwan, and I would just like to thank the city board and the Sister City Council for allowing me to have such a great opportunity to fly over to Australia and represent our city and our country. One thing I'm really looking forward to is trying new foods and learning about their culture. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Ryan Nishiyama. I'd like to thank the Sister City Committee for giving us all the support to experience this once-in-a-life opportunity. And one thing I'm excited about is to travel internationally and just to get, like, meet my host's family and experience all the culture and daily life in Australia.
In January, there will be an adult Australian group coming over, so we will be looking for host families. If anyone in the audience would like to host, just let us know. We're on the Sister City website, we're in the phone book, we're old school, we have landlines. So let us know if you'd like to host. We will have a group of adults coming in in January. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And if my fellow councilmembers would help me, I have certificates for the students.
And gifts?
Oh, and gifts. Darren Pinedo? Darren? Kaylee Fung? Kaylee Fung? Okay, sorry. Matthew Kwan? Sorry, I'll give you the next one. Oh, Ryan? I'm not gonna, what is the last name?
Nishiyama.
Nishiyama, okay. Oh, and here's another one. Shah. Siraj Shah? Oh, you know what? I was gonna read it, but it's over there. Oh, Faith? Okay, Faith Wada? Wada? And let me just read this. It says, "Certificate of recognition presented on behalf of the citizens of Temple City in recognition of your participation in the Temple City Hoxbury Student Exchange Program. We commend you for helping expand the mission of Sister Cities programs throughout the world to promote peace through mutual respect, understanding, and cooperation, one individual, one community at a time." Thank you.
Okay, Nancy, don't leave yet. Don't leave. Everybody look at the group, okay? Notice anything different from previous years?
Yes. There's more of a balance.
Well, we actually have four boys and two girls. There's been years, if you recall, where we've had five girls and one boy.
Yes.
Also, just to quickly mention, everybody, with this group is a little bit different from the previous years in that they've actually met their siblings from Australia, and they're, they know the families, or they will meet the families, but they, the Australians were here, if you recall, a couple of months ago. And so that's a little bit of an advantage, I think, for them to be going out there and knowing them already. So, you know, we wish them the best of luck, and you guys are gonna have a great time and enjoy yourselves. Nancy, when are they leaving again?
July 18th.
July 18th, so have a great trip. We'll see you soon. All right? Thank you.
Okay, now we have a special recognition for Pastor David Palmer. Yay! Pastor David Palmer has been a pastor with the Temple City United Methodist Church for 10 years. He graduated from Fuller Theological Seminary in 2003, and is currently working towards his doctorate degree in missional studies. During his time in the city, Pastor Palmer is especially proud of his work connecting with other churches in the community and establishing the Temple City Coalition for the Homeless. He enjoys his involvement with the National Day of Prayer, Relay for Life, and working with the Boy Scouts. We will miss seeing Pastor Palmer and his family in the community. We wish him the best of luck. So, if you would come up, and if my fellow councilmembers will join you. If you can just come and stand right here and be embarrassed.
Oh, good.
Okay. Certificate of recognition presented on behalf of the citizens of Temple City to Pastor David Palmer, Temple City United Methodist Church, in recognition of your 10 years of dedicated service to Temple City Uni- Temple City United Methodist Church. Thank you for your support, time, and effort in servicing the community and residents of Temple City.
Give the pastor a mic. Just a couple of quick words. First is that being here in Temple City for 10 years has been a real privilege for me. Some of you know I grew up on a military base, so anything longer than three years makes this my home. So, no matter where I go, Temple City is my home. I've been here three times longer than I've been anywhere else in my life. So, a very whole, special place in my heart. The other thing, just to mention that the work I've done, of course, hasn't been alone, and many of the people here in this community have been a partner of that. And it's great to see the connection as we get into the community, the ways that we can work together, and just to continue to encourage the conversations, even when we have disagreements, that we can solve our problems together if we work together as a city. So appreciate your time to be with you.
David, I just wanna say that I did not know, I guess when you're on vacation, far away, you don't hear everything, but I'm very sad to see you leave, but I know that you'll make a huge impact wherever you go. And I want you to know, you are so passionate and have been. You know, we've had discussions for 10 years off and on on homelessness, and I can't think of anyone that I know that has more passion than you. And I just want you to know that the COG continues to work on homelessness issues. We're making great strides. Susan Rubio just gave the COG $5.6 million to implement on homeless plans. And so, great things are going to happen, and I think you've worked to set a foundation with not only COG, but with the church coalition. And so we'll be emailing you and letting you know what's going on here, because you'll always be a part of that. So, thank you. Okay.
And David, you know, I just want you to know it's been a privilege and an honor to have known you all these years, and certainly I wish you and your family the best of luck on this new adventure in your life. But I know we've talked about your dealings and your help with the homeless issues in the city, but in addition to that, I just want everybody to know that David has always been ready to open up his church and his heart to many causes in Temple City, and has been involved in so many ways that, you know, it's hard to name them all. And we're gonna miss that. And thank you for all that you've done and all that you've done for the city. You are a part of Temple City and you always will be. And hopefully, when you're done with this adventure, you'll think about coming back and seeing it someday. So, you always have a home here, and thank you so much, and, you know, Godspeed and good luck to all of you, okay? Thank you.
Any other comments? I just wanted to say, on behalf of Relay for Life, thank you so much for giving us a second home. It's been so convenient and so wonderful to be able to have our monthly meetings there. It's sometimes difficult to find somewhere that will accommodate, you know, 10, 15, sometimes 30 people. So, I wanted to thank you for that. You've always had just a great heart and much passion. So, again, thank you, and I wish both of you the best of luck. I'm very excited for this next step in your life. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna be moving on to public comments. The city council will now hear public comments regarding items not listed on the agenda. The procedure to address the city council is highlighted on the first page of the agenda. Ms. Lucy Liu?
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Potem, city council, city manager and staff. I'm here to remind everybody, Neighborhood Watch Area 6 Meeting is coming up this Thursday at Life Oak Park, Community Room, 5:30 to 7:30. Again, you know, come out, find out about what we're talking about. We are still talking about the subject of surviving mass shooting, and recently, probably within the last five days, we've had several incidences. Who'd think, you know, Costco, right? But we tell people to always think about stuff like that. And, you know, learn about how to do the, a little bit about bleeding control, because if unfortunately you're ever in a situation like that, you wanna be able to help, you know, yourself, your family, whoever. So please come out, join us for the meeting, and the city will provide dinner. It's a great forum for, you know, if you ever wanna ask questions or come meet the team, you know. We have one of the best teams from the temple station, so these are the greatest guys. And just, everybody is welcome. You don't have to live in the area. If you've missed your meeting for your area, you know, all of the meetings are open to all residences, all residents. And, I mean, we even have people who live around the border who don't get this type of meeting, and, you know, and I invite them, you know, although it's on our city's dime, but I'm sorry. We have safe neighbors, we still, you know, we expand our safe neighborhoods. So, it's, you know, it's great. People really, really like it. So hopefully we'll, I know Mayor Potem Chavez will be there Thursday.
I will be there.
Yes, sir.
I'm glad you reminded me.
Yes.
But it's at Life Oak Park again, right? This is the second time.
Well, this is Area 6, and Area 6 is always at Life Oak Park.
Okay.
So, Area 3, we had to move to Life Oak Park because we outgrew our membership.
That's great.
That's great, yes. And we have two more coming up at Life Oak Park because we've outgrown our membership.
It's a good venue, a lot of parking.
Yes, absolutely. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lucy. Next I have Jim Cliff.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Vice Chairman Chavez, city council and staff. I'd just like to say thank you for the certificate of recognition that I received on Wednesday, the 12th. That was the Transportation and Public Safety Commission meeting, which is, was my last. I served there for nine years, and I really appreciate the opportunity to have been part of making the city a better place. We basically started anew at that time.
Yes, you did.
And I think we took on things that were necessary on that level and accomplished a lot. I learned a lot being on it, and I appreciate the opportunity of being able to do that. And it really was an honor and a privilege to have served on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you for your service.
Yes, absolutely.
I can remember, Jim, when, that first time we appointed you and how excited you were to be part of that. And your excitement certainly carried over into your work, and you did a great job. And I know you'll still be a part of coming here and getting everything, keeping us on our toes, so.
Well, no, it all happens here with the city council, because I've always, you know, recognized that level. To actually be part of a commission that is, you know, part of advising you was, you know, something really important, and I was glad to be part of that. So, once again, thank you very much.
Great job. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Jim. Okay. I have a Lori Ba. Is that right?
Hello, this is council. I live in Area 10, Neighborhood Watch Area 10, by Sam's Club, and near St. Gabriel Valley Airport. It used to be Almonte Airport. And tonight I'm talking, speaking of the noise, complaining about the helicopter, low-fly helicopter. Usually late night, like close to midnight, and then into 1:00 or 2:00 in the morning. Sometimes the helicopter on the way back to the airport. When I heard a noise, I ran outside, and it's very close, up right above the house, about 200 feet. I think the FAA, the Federal Aviation, allow around 1,000 feet above the residential neighborhood. So 200 or 300 is very loud. You know, the noise can be amplified like three, four times. So that's what I saw. And many times, they, on the way back to the airport, they fly through the mobile home area, and I saw it's very, about 200 feet. So I'm very, I feel very sorry for those folks in the mobile home park. So I think there, I suggest if the city can contact the St. Gabriel Valley Airport to suggest them to find another route. I think there's, on Valley, there's basically commercial buildings there. So if they can land on the way back to the airport, go that route, and then that will help, because no one lives there. People leave office around 6:00 or 7:00 o'clock in the afternoon, right? So I think maybe we should call the airport, the manager there, suggest them not to go the way they're right now. It's that you have to, went into the Temple City area, basically from Los Angeles out to Danes. So that really, I don't think that's right. So maybe we should call them, talk to them, suggest a better way. So, that's my opinion. So I think that would be the best solution. They should find some space that no, there's no residential neighborhood.
Are these people practicing, learning how to flyovers? Do you know who these people are?
Basically, the, I think sometimes military helicopter, very loud.
What kind of helicopters?
Military.
Military?
Yes. And also police helicopter, but there's no reason that they fly that low, like 200 feet.
Police helicopter, they might be there for-
Yeah, but they're on the way back to the airport. They're not like in missions, searching for something. When they do that, usually when they fly above the trouble area, they fly very high. They stay at very high elevation because, for safety reasons.
And when did this occur, and has it occurred how many times?
Yeah, many times, the, between 1:00 and 2:00 a.m.
And how?
Between 11:00 p.m. and 2:00 a.m.
So you're saying that helicopters are flying into the Almonte Airport between 11:00 and 2:00 in the morning?
Correct.
And how many times has this happened in the last four weeks?
There's several times.
What do you mean by several times?
They're either on my side or the other side, either on my side or above the mobile home park.
Okay.
You know, they're right next to the Sam's Club.
Thank you. Ryan, can you look into that, please, and get back to him and see what's going on?
No problem, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
Maybe check with our captain, right?
Yeah, we're gonna have our city manager contact you and get some more details and see what we can do.
So just remind them that they should maintain above 1,000 feet above. That would be great.
Okay.
So if they, maybe 800 is fine, but 200 is not acceptable.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Were there any other public comments? Okay, closing public comments. Moving on to consent calendar. All consent calendar items may be approved in a single motion as recommended unless removed for further discussion.
Move to approve consent calendar?
Everybody's waiting for somebody else to do it.
A second?
No, I just wanted, was there a second?
Yeah, I'll second.
Can I get a roll call, please?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mann?
Yes.
Councilmember Sternquist?
Yes.
Councilmember Yu?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Chavez?
Yes.
Mayor Fish?
Yes. Thank you. Moving on to item eight, public hearing. Adoption and Resolution 195402, ordering the levy of citywide lighting and maintenance district assessments for fiscal year 2019, 2020.
Mayor Fish, members of the council, the next few public hearings are related to actions dealing with the city's budget. So this is the first of several that you'll be dealing with. Ms. Perez will go over, and some of them very quickly, they're routine and matter. And then we'll get to the heart of the matter as well, our municipal budget for fiscal year 1920.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Potem, council members. This hearing is regarding the ordering of the levy for the citywide lighting and maintenance district assessments. This is an annual requirement that we do, and it's to, and also to adopt Resolution 195402. So just a brief history on it. This public hearing has been required by the Landscape and Lighting Act since 19- This public hearing has been required by the Landscape and Lighting Act since 1972. We formed the Lighting and Maintenance Assessment District in 1979. And it's to levy assessments for street lighting, traffic signals, median maintenance, and park maintenance. However, in 1997, Proposition 218 deemed that the park assessment be discontinued. So what is the process to get here for the public hearing on April 16th? We ordered the engineering report that was approved by council. On June 4th, City Council adopted resolution that declared the intent to levy assessments. And today we're here before you to adopt resolution to order the levy of the fiscal year 1920 citywide lighting and maintenance district assessments with the county assessor's office. Just a quick review, there are no changes for the, from the study for fiscal year 1920. It remains at $330,000 as far as income. As you know, that is not enough to cover the expenditures for the program. Therefore, the general fund subsidy is required to make them whole. So tonight's public hearing is, it's recommended or requests that you open the public hearing, receive any input, close the public hearing, and then also adopt Resolution 195402, ordering the levy of the citywide lighting and maintenance district assessments for fiscal year 2019, 2020.
Thank you. Do we have any council comments?
Nope.
Nope. Okay, I'm open, I'm gonna open public hearing. I have Steve Stafford. Oh, I'm sorry, no, you want the next one, right? Never mind. Was there anyone who wanted to speak on this item? Okay, I'm gonna close public hearing. Council questions or comments? Okay, can I get a motion?
Motion to approve?
Do I need to say it?
I think we have to actually say the.
I think you have to read it.
No, you do not.
Yes, you do, you have to read it. You're gonna make me read it. We have your glasses on.
Okay. Motion to approve, but I would need to be able to see better.
You want me to?
Resolution number 19.
Fifty-four.
Dash 5401, adopting the.
No, 5402.
Five, four, zero, two. I can't see it, I'm sorry. I borrowed Susan's glasses, so.
I'll do it. All right. I would make a motion that we adopt Resolution 19-5402, ordering the levy and collection of assessments for fiscal year 2019, 2020.
I'll second it.
Thank you.
A roll call, please?
Councilmember Mann?
Yes.
Councilmember Sternquist?
Yes.
Councilmember Yu?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Chavez?
Yes.
Mayor Fish?
Yes. Do we need to read it?
No.
No?
No, because we've said it.
Okay, let me make sure. Moving on to item B, adoption of Resolution Number 195401, adopting the annual appropriations limit for fiscal year 2019, 2020.
This is step two in this four-step process of making the budget cake here, so. With that, Susan.
Good evening again. This is regarding the appropriations limit that is required by all cities. And what it does is it restricts the amount of tax proceeds that we can, that can be appropriated. And then it also requires adoption of the appropriation limit. The calculation came out to be that our appropriations limit is just under $22 million. And our appropriation is subject to the limit of almost $11 million. So we have a big margin of $11 million. Our appropriations we've made is just under 50% of that limit, so we're well under the maximum that we can spend. So for tonight, it's, again, City Council is recommended to open the public hearing, receive input, close the public hearing, and adopt Resolution Number 195401, adopting the annual appropriations limit for fiscal year 2019, 2020.
Okay, do we have any council comments? Open public hearing? Any comments? Close public hearing? Council questions? Okay, I will entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor, I will move that we adopt Resolution Number 19-5401, adopting the annual appropriation limit for fiscal year 1920.
Second.
Roll call, please?
Councilmember Mann?
Yes.
Councilmember Sternquist?
Yes.
Councilmember Yu?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Chavez?
Yes.
Mayor Fish?
Yes. Moving on to item C, adoption of Resolution Number 195403, approving the master fee and fine schedule for fiscal year 2019, 2020.
Mayor Fish, members of the council, before you is the consideration of the master fee and fine schedule. Ms. Parras will go over. There has, there were a few questions during our last budget study session that we will be, that she'll be addressing with this. It won't be as routine as the other matters. But, and talk to you about some of the proposed fee adjustments, some that have been included, most that have been included in the proposed budget that you'll be seeing subsequent to this. But some that you have not, or some that have, are not included in terms of the revenue assumptions, so with that.
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Potem, councilmembers. So the master and fine schedule is also an annual issue or item that we, that we have council approve. This year, we are increasing some, most of the fees by the 2.7 CPI factor. This was the one calculated on March 2019. So it includes all planning service fees except for the appeals. We, the address assignment or change request is also getting the CPI increase. Shopping cart containment, retrieval plan review, all the public works fees, and special event permit and street closure permits are also getting that CPI factor. What's not getting the CPI factor but a flat increase are some of the recreation programs. Youth soccer will go from $40 to $70. Teen Zone with the school year, or school year with transportation goes from $225 to $350. The youth volleyball goes from $50 to $70, and this will help recoup our costs for the running those programs. The next fee is the parks facilities, and I wanted to make a clarification here. The picnic shelter for the small or half of the large is going up to $75 from $60. And what we're eliminating is the ability to rent it for six hours at $30. There, we were having issues when one family would leave and another one would come in. So now it has to be rented for the full day. And then the picnic, the large picnic shelters will be $125 per day, going up from $120, and eliminating the six hours ability to rent.
Wait, so the picnic shelter is going from $120 to $125, you said?
Correct, for the large.
And what's the current six hours, oh, okay, so, what's six hours at $60?
So currently, they're able to rent the shelters for six hours, like in the morning, and then another six hours in afternoon.
Oh, I see.
At $60 per six hours.
So this $125 is the whole day?
The whole day.
And what is the day considered? Is there a certain limit, an hour to hour? How do we determine a day? Is that 12 hours? I guess Kathy's gonna answer that for us.
We don't specify an hourly limit. Whenever the park is open, they can reserve.
So.
Well, I should, let me clarify. Whenever we have staff on, so it's from 8:00 AM to 10:00 PM, there can be reservations.
So they can reserve from 8:00 AM to 10:00 PM?
Actually, I stand corrected, it's 9:00, 9:00 PM. Our picnic shelter policies have the hours that the shelter can be reserved, and it is 8:00 AM to 9:00 PM.
Okay.
To allow for an hour for cleanup before the park closes.
So that's the whole day? Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy.
So we do have a couple of new fees and also from recreation. We do have a late pickup fee at the Parks and Rec Center. And what it is, is there's some programs where children are left at the end of the program. So this is to help defray our costs when our employees have to stay behind. So it's $5 for every 15 minutes. The special program fee.
I'd have a question on that. So currently, there are no costs?
Correct.
Where we just stop, just hang around?
Correct.
And wait? You know, I, it's a pretty steep fee. I think I asked the same manager this question. I mean, it is really not a way to make money. But is that, so it's a problem trying to correct an issue that we have with people pick up kids?
We, I should clarify that we did have a late pickup fee several years ago, before we had a master fee schedule. When we implemented the master fee and fine schedule, we did not, for some reason, did not include it in that. So we have not been collecting it the last several years. We have had some problems with parents picking their, their children up late. I should mention that we did survey other cities to find out what they are charging, and almost all of them that have a program where you have to sign your children in and out, do require a fee, and it ranges from a dollar a minute up to, I think ours is one of the lowest ones, $5. South Pasadena, for instance, charges $3 a minute whenever a parent is late. So ours, $5 for 15 minutes, I believe it is, is not high.
Okay. Yeah, I, I don't think that's high at all. And I think, to me, it's not more, I don't think it's a revenue issue. It's, we need to, like, control these pickup, I mean, it's not fair for, not only the staff, but the child sitting there waiting for his parents to come, to come up, so. Just a reminder that needed to be there on time.
I know I've seen them as high as $20 for five minutes.
All right.
And the next fee is a special program fee, and these are events that are put on by Parks and Recreation, such as like the prom. And it would only, they would only charge the attendants what our cost is.
Okay.
And the total, so the total estimated revenues for the CPI increases, the new fees, the adjusted fees, we're estimating about $14,000 that will be added to our general fund revenues. So tonight, it's recommended that the City Council open the public hearing, receive input, close the public hearing, and adopt Resolution 19-5403, approving the master fee and fine schedule for fiscal year 2019, 2020.
Thank you. Council comments?
I have a, I have a question. It seems that youth soccer has taken a little bit of a bigger hit than these other programs. Is there an issue there, or what's going on?
We wanted to make our fees consistent. Right now, we charge $70 for flag football, but the other youth sports fees were different amounts. So our purpose was to make them.
Yeah, like youth volleyball went from 50 to 70.
Volleyball went from 50 to 70, soccer from 40 to 70. When we started these programs, volleyball and soccer are relatively new, so we had the fees lower when they first started a couple of years ago. Now that they are pretty well established, we felt it was more reasonable to charge the same fee as we do for the other sports. It's just consistency.
So basically, most of our youth team programs would be the $70?
Yes.
Do you anticipate a drop-off?
No.
I mean, I know in the past, when we've talked about fees, especially for Parks and Rec, we, we looked at more or less the human side of that. And we wanted to make sure that we didn't make it cost prohibitive. I, I don't really necessarily have a problem. I'm assuming that these are to cover our costs. We're not exactly, like, making money on the deal.
We're not making money at all. These don't cover the entire cost either.
But what I would like to see maybe is in the future, maybe, maybe next year, if we can take a look and see, well, did this affect our numbers, you know, and then we can decide at that time, maybe it's something we need to look at a little closer. That's all. Thank you.
Councilmember Ratty?
Yes, thank you. Also, I have the same, along the same lines of the youth programs. You mentioned that part of it was to recoup some of the program costs. Do we know exactly what percentage we're actually recouping? Because in, in the past, when we've talked about specifically Parks and Rec's fees, there was an active policy decision made that we're subsidizing these for our residents. So when we're saying recoup, is there an approximate percentage that the $70 fee is, is recouping for, say, the youth soccer?
The, the amount that we recoup varies based on the program. For instance, the Stars program, I believe is currently around 80% that we recoup in fees. Teen Zone is not close to that because the fee has been so low. By comparison, the Stars Club, parents pay $350 for every 10, 11-week session. The fee has been $225 for the entire school year for Teen Zone, and that includes transportation. So that's one reason why we were recommending an increase. So Teen Zone is probably closer to 30%. Special Events is not even, probably 10%. It just varies on the program, what the, the amount of the subsidy is for, based on the fees. The only program that, well, there are two programs that pretty much cover their costs. One is our Fee and Charge Class Program, because we don't have staff costs. They're independent contractors, so the city collects or keeps a percentage of the registration, so that is, pays for itself. The other is our Day Camp Program, which is pretty close to 100%, at least of our direct cost. It doesn't include any of the administrative overhead or any of that, but our direct cost. But none of them, other than the Fee and Charge Class, are, are self-supporting. They're all subsidized.
What about, say, soccer and volleyball?
So the sports programs varies when we do our budget. We look not only at the staff costs, but also equipment, uniforms, awards. I would guess it's probably maybe 80%. I don't have the exact numbers, because we put all the sports together, so some of them will recoup more costs. The more participants we have, it works out where our percent is higher, if we have more participants than lower. Basketball is our biggest program, and those fees are a little bit higher than, than volleyball, soccer, and, and football. And so that one probably carries a lot more of the, the actual cost. Each program also has different capabilities. For instance, the, the basketball program, we have to pay for officials. We don't pay for officials for soccer and volleyball, we use our own staff, so the, the costs are different as well. But my, my estimate is that the sports programs are probably, as a whole, between 75 and 80% covered by fees.
So would, would this proposed increase from 40 to 70 then?
No.
Are you saying that's bringing us closer to that?
The reason is, right now, you may recall, several years ago, we offered two sessions of volleyball, a spring and a fall. We cut that back when we had to make some changes to our program, so we only now offer one session. And we're limited to about 40 participants, so it's not a huge program. So the, the increase, even though it's $30, you know, 40 participants, isn't a, a whole lot to cover a lot of the additional cost. The same thing with soccer, we'll get, I think we get about 75 or 80 participants in that program. So again, it, it helps recoup some of our costs. It's not going to recoup all of our costs, though.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Yu?
I'm okay.
I just had one really quick question, Kathy. On the Teen Zone, school year transportation, that's just for the school year, the 350, correct?
Correct, from August until school gets out.
Okay, and do we have a, a summer Teen Zone?
We do.
Is that a separate fee then?
We, we considered raising that one as well, but we wanted to maybe take it in smaller steps. There is a concern, there's a lot of concern about the fee for Teen Zone in comparison to, for instance, summer day camp. Summer day camp, the participants pay $135 a week. Teen Zone is $410 for the entire 10 weeks. So there is a discrepancy there. So that will likely be looked at next year. We didn't want to do too much in one year, though.
Kathy, can you tell me again, I'm, I'm sorry, which one is 410?
The Teen Zone, the Teen Program.
Summer.
Summer Teen Program. Got it, okay.
That's a good deal.
For 10 weeks, it's a very good deal.
Okay, thank you.
I'd like to go ahead and open the public hearing. Steve Stafford, wanted to get up?
Mayor Fish, Mayor Potem Chavez, councilmembers, city staff, I applaud this for getting, you know, working on this and the time that was spent working on this to increase the master fee schedule. It's something that needs to be done, probably should be looked at, like, once a year and go through it. Look at what we're taking. Look at what we're taking in and make sure we can maintain it. Again, I applaud everybody that's worked on this. Thank you.
Any other public comment? I'm sorry. Any other comments? Okay, I'm gonna close public comments. Any additional council comments, questions?
Yes, if I may, Mayor Fish. So I guess, I will say that I do have an issue with the steep relative increase of the- the steep relative increase of some of the Parks and Recreation programs. I think, I'm just trying to put myself in a position of a parent or someone who's participating in it this year, and then next year, they're like, oh, let's sign up for that program again, and say for soccer, it's almost double. That's, I think there's a certain level of sticker shock associated with seeing that. Even though, you know, in the larger scheme of things, I mean, even Kathy mentioned that that doesn't entirely recoup all of our costs. I think there, if we're gonna increase it, kind of like what we've talked about in previous years, related to public works fees and other engineering planning fees, there was sort of this graduated schedule of increasing towards what our ultimate goal is. So at least the public doesn't feel like we're- if they don't hear our discussion, they'll think it's some arbitrary, you know, oh, they just decided to increase it from forty to seventy dollars. To me, that just seems like sticker shock. I would suggest maybe something less steep, like maybe forty to fifty, and then the fifty to sixty or something. And then we look at this every year, so it's not like we adopt the fee schedule and then we're stuck with it for five years. So that's something I'd ask council to consider for the Parks and Rec programs.
I have a question. Kathy, how long is the youth soccer program? How many weeks is that?
How many weeks is it? Ten? I believe it's ten weeks.
So it's ten weeks, and what do they have?
They usually have two practices.
Two practices and a game?
Less than seven dollars.
So that's three hours minimum?
Yeah, minimum, yeah. A lot of coaches practice more than an hour, even though they shouldn't.
All right, well, I'm comfortable with the seventy dollars, because for the time that we have those kids, that's still a pretty good deal.
We're paying staff.
I mean, we're paying staff to be out there. I understand your concern that people are gonna look at and say, well, last year I paid forty dollars, now I'm gonna have to pay seventy, but- you know, maybe that's our fault.
I think our fees have been relatively low-
For too long.
For a long time.
And now we need to get them up where they're supposed to be. And I think, I think it's still a pretty good deal for the supervision and for the time, and that they get out of that program. Even if it's a ten-week program, seventy dollars, that's seven bucks a week.
And you have two lessons or two times, so that's three fifty.
Two practices and a game.
And a game.
Yeah, and I'm not disputing the fact that the value is there. That's, I don't think anyone would argue about that. I think it's just the perception of someone who's paying the fee that there is a sudden drastic change. Obviously, this is nowhere to the scale of when we're talking about planning and engineering fees, where some of those were even more substantial. But, I mean, we might think it's little, but maybe for some families, that extra thirty dollars could make a difference.
Well, I understand that, and that's why I suggested that if we see that this is having an effect on the ability of our children to sign up. And also, just keep in mind that there are scholarship programs available to those that cannot afford the fees. We've talked about those many times and how those scholarship programs are underutilized quite a bit. And I know that the park does promote those as well. So I don't think that that should prohibit any student or any child who wants to participate in one of our programs, because there are other ways of paying for this as well.
Okay, did you have anything else? No? Okay, I will entertain a motion.
Okay, Madam Mayor, I would make a motion that we adopt Resolution number nineteen dash five four oh three approving the master fee and fine schedule for fiscal year two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty.
A second? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Mann?
Yes.
Councilmember you?
Yes.
Councilmember Sternquist?
Yes.
Mayor Portemper Chavez?
Yes.
Mayor Fish?
Yes. Moving on to item D, adoption of the proposed budget for fiscal year two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty.
Mayor Fish, members of the council, now we get to the main event. Adoption and consideration of the fiscal year nineteen twenty budget. We spent a couple hours about a week and a half ago going over in some detail. Councilmember Sternquist has had the opportunity to meet with the Administrative Services Director as well to go over the budget, and some of the points will be made during our budget presentation today. I'll be interjecting a few comments as well related to our long-term CIP and some of the existing CIP and some of the general fund proceeds, actually use of reserves related to CIP as well. So Susan has a presentation that she, it's an abbreviated presentation from our budget study session, but, and we will, and throughout the presentation, there were, there are a few other questions that the council asked during our budget study session as well, which we will answer in kind.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Portemper, and council members. This is the last public hearing for tonight. So tonight, we ask that the council provide direction on additions or deletions to the proposed operating budget and CIP, adopt the fiscal year two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty proposed budget, including any revisions that are made tonight, and then review and approve updates to the general fund reserve classifications, which is required by the GASB board. So as far as general fund, we'll start with general fund, only because this is our main operating fund. For next year, it's estimated that our revenues and transfers in are just a little over fifteen million dollars, and expenditures and transfers out barely above the fifteen million dollar. Our small surplus is a hundred and seven thousand dollars, three seventy-five. And that includes the adjustments that Mayor Portemper Chavez requested at the budget study session. So this is just a picture of what our revenues look like. As you can see, over forty-two, or forty-two and a half percent is made up of taxes. If you include the intergovernmental, which is the in lieu vehicle license fee, that's another thirty-one point nine. So we're looking at about seventy-four, over seventy-four percent coming from taxes. You'll see our charges for services, nine point one, which is the next big, besides the license and permits, at over ten percent. So this is just a picture to show us where most of our revenues are coming from. On the other hand, this is our operating expenditures by function. You can see public safety is thirty-five point one percent. That's very good compared to most cities. Most cities, their public safety costs could run between forty-five to sixty percent. So we're good there. General government, public works, community services. So this is where the money is being spent from our general fund. So in summary, what's in our general fund for next year is we have the election costs. That's about a hundred and seventeen thousand. We're budgeting for the L.A. County Library contribution that we pledged for one and a half million. What's not in our general fund is the reallocations of some of the expenses that we made and charged to other special revenue funds. The crossing guards, we fully have reallocated the cost for that into gas tax and the traffic congestion relief fund. We've also reallocated the full MPDS or National Discharge Elimination System from the general fund to the new fund, Measure W. So that's one hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars that we've removed from our general fund budget.
Susan, I have a quick question. On the library, have we paid any money on that?
I believe we paid about four hundred thousand dollars on that one.
Okay, that's what I thought, because it was two million that we allocated.
One point nine.
Oh, one point nine. Okay, and then in the one point five, is that, do we anticipate then paying that all this next fiscal year?
Yes.
Or will some of it carry over to the fund?
We're anticipating this in the whole, in fiscal year nineteen twenty.
Okay, good, thank you.
So what does our fund balance look like? In, at the end of fiscal year two thousand seventeen eighteen, our fund balance was eighteen point eight million dollars for the general fund. We have this classifications where we committed is more for our emergency contingency of three and a half million. We have assigned for the end of June thirty, two thousand eighteen, it's a little over eleven million. And the unassigned, which is basically, we don't have any purpose for it, is four point, almost four point two million. Our estimated fund balance reserve at the end of this fiscal year is just under eighteen and a half million dollars, at eighteen million, four hundred thirty-seven thousand, nine seventy-one. Again, our unas- the committed stays the same at three and a half. The assigned total goes down to ten point seven million, only because of our, some of our CIP costs we have this year in eighteen nineteen. And then we're estimating a surplus of about fifty-one thousand dollars. So that brings a total to that eighteen point four million. This is something we request the council approve, as it's required by the GASB and also by our auditors for our CAFR. The fund balance classification for nineteen twenty looks a lot lower, only because we have the one point five million payable to the county library. And we're also estimating half a million dollars for CIP projects. So that our fund balance reserves goes from eighteen point four million to sixteen point five million. Estimated balance for nineteen twenty.
And I'll go into that five hundred thousand dollar use of reserves in a few moments.
So in summary, what is our general fund doing, the proposed budget? We're maintaining our service levels. Our operational budget is balanced with a projected surplus of one hundred seven thousand, three seventy-five. Next, we'll go into the five-year forecast for the general fund. These are some of the assumptions that was also shared with you at the budget study session. The revenues are flat. The only one that's up, as always, is the VLF, our vehicle license fee. The expenditures, our contracted services always increase each year. If it's not for the sheriff's contract, it's for either- next year, our animal con- or animal services contract is going up by about, I believe, twenty-seven percent. And then the assumption also is that there's no COLA increases for staff. We're in the middle of negotiations right now, so there's nothing that has been agreed upon. And as you know, PERS always increases their rates. These are raised based on their last valuation report back in August of two thousand eighteen. So as you can see, the cumulative since, cumulative balances or increases since fiscal year eighteen nineteen is in the brown. So we're looking at about ninety-two thousand for next year. In the following years, all the way to the fifth year, fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty-four, we're looking at a total increase of about three hundred forty-six thousand dollars from eighteen nineteen. So with the five-year projections, and this is with elections every other year, this is what our estimated surplus or deficit will be in the next five years. As you can see, in the third year fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, we're anticipating a deficit of about six to eight thousand dollars and moving forward on the future years. Councilmember, you had made a suggestion of possibly budgeting for the elections every year, and this is what it looks like. So again, the twenty twenty-one surplus has gone down by about the hundred and seventeen thousand, I believe, election costs. And of course, those costs can go up annually also. I'm just using the base amount we're budgeting for nineteen twenty. As you can see, twenty-two, twenty-three, we're at a hundred and forty-five thousand dollar deficit. So this is something we'll need to plan in the near future and how to address these costs. Now, for the citywide budget, we're looking at about almost twenty-three million dollars in revenues with the general fund, our special revenue funds that consists of all the measures, Prop C, Prop A, CDBG. Those funds are restricted for certain purposes. And then we put in the successor agency fund of six hundred and thirty thousand. You'll see that the expenditures totaled twenty-five point eight million dollars and is really a deficit, but the special revenue funds have fund balances that are meant to be used for those purposes. So one of the things we'd like to discuss today is the talk about crossing guards. I know that was an item council wanted to discuss. This, for nineteen twenty, the proposed proposal was that fifty-five thousand of the costs will be charged to gas tax, which is eligible, and the other forty-one thousand, we were going to allocate to the traffic congestion relief fund. And this, these funds are available for three years. So one of the recommendations was to, my understanding, is to re- get reimbursement for the thirteen thousand, or the one-third of it. We'll still spend the ninety-six thousand, although we're looking to get help from the school district. So every three years, that forty-one thousand will be funded at the end of the third year, hopefully by the school district, but that's something we'll have to work out. So I'd like to possibly get direction from council if it's-
So we're keeping the same service level?
Correct.
But we're just paying for it differently now?
We're, yes.
Or allocating other funds?
We're allocating it differently, and then the third step, or third step to it, is trying to get reimbursement for our costs.
And how is that going to work exactly? I'm assuming that that's an issue that'll be brought up at the next joint meeting? Okay.
When I had the time, spent a couple hours with Susan to go over, and when I wasn't able to attend the meeting, I looked at the budget, and in looking at the crossing guards, Susan was able to answer quite a few questions with that. So we currently pay for, I believe, fourteen crossing guards or something?
Eight. We pay for eight crossing guards.
Eight, and the school district pays for two.
Right.
So it's a total of ninety-six thousand dollars that we are paying yearly for crossing guards. It is one of the things in the budget, an expenditure that we have, that we basically, I believe, have no control over. We don't pay the school district the money to pay the contractor. So we get billed directly from the contractor. It seems, I'm gonna say maybe five to seven years ago, I recall that number being somewhere like seventy-five thousand dollars that we paid for crossing guards. I think one of the reasons that we haven't really paid attention to the increase in cost is because it is done not directly to the school district, but to a contractor, basically. And we, as long as I've been on council for nine years, have never looked at contracting services. And we always talk about best practices in, you know, looking at things relatively in a shorter period of time, three to five years, to see where the cost rises have been. And, I mean, things don't necessarily ever go down. But I also feel that because we have this, the monies that we're getting, the forty-four, forty-one thousand to traffic congestion relief fund, that is going to go away in three years. So in three years, we are going to have to figure out how we are going to subsidize that forty-one thousand dollars that we're currently giving them. I felt that one of the ways that we could redistribute the funds, which makes more sense to me, and that's why I wanted to have the discussion, is we are consistently hearing, and we hear our sheriffs talk about this, that there is constant issues, no matter what we do, at the school sites. we are consistently hearing, and we hear our sheriffs talk about this, that there is constant issues, no matter what we do, at the school sites. In the morning with congestion, with parents not following the rules, people going, what have you. I really feel that it's a much better use of those monies, especially since they're going away in three years, to potentially redistribute that fourteen thousand dollars the first year, the second year, and the third year, and possibly investing ours in a motor, in one of our motor cops if we can, you know, get them and get them trained, where it is a broader true traffic congestion idea, where they are looking at, you know, enforcement. Because it seems that enforcement is the key. We know that in fireworks, we know that in everything we do. And, and I feel that the school district has a responsibility to hold meetings, train the parents, and let them know the importance of having kids cross streets safely. I mean, I, you know, I, I see kids crossing all the time and we're not taking away crossing guards. We're asking the school district to partner with us on a, on a larger percentage because we just heard from the budget that we're gonna be looking at ways to make up funding that we don't have and we don't know how we're going to get it. So this seemed like an open discussion with the school district. You know, when the school district charges the city fees to use their facilities, we all know it went up about three hundred percent or two hundred and eighty seven percent. There was really no discussion, it was just, this is it. We do have a new superintendent, we have new school board members, but we still have the same bill with a two hundred and eighty seven percent increase and our costs are going up forty thousand dollars this year. So I think in the big picture, especially in light of this going away in three years, that we were gonna have to do something anyway. And we're gonna have to look at things bit by bit to see how we can cut away. And I think asking the school district to possibly pick up fourteen thousand dollars per year where the city is still subsidizing fifty six thousand or fifty eight thousand dollars is really quite reasonable. Maybe at that point, the school district will come to us and say, hey, listen, let's, let's, let's make this a wash and we'll reduce your costs by, you know, forty one thousand over three years. I mean, that's a discussion to be held. But I think it's a very fair and actually a good plan that gives the community, we represent the community, not specifically the school district. And I think we're consistently hearing that our sheriffs need some support. They can't do it by themselves. And we've tried everything. We've even done, you know, we've done safe crossing or safe schools. We've put in blinkers, we've done what have you. And we still hear this is a problem because there's, they can't enforce it if there's nobody to enforce the things in place. So I would just like at least to hear, you know, your thoughts on it. I think it's kind of a little bit more of out of the box thinking, but I think that it would have the biggest impact as far as where the dollars are going. And hopefully, you know, having the school district partner and, and train parents and tell them, you know, have meetings, you have back to school night, you have things. I, I think we really need to be a true partnership with them and, and that's just my take on it.
I don't think anybody up here disagrees with you. We've been preaching this for, ever since I've been on council as far as the partnership. Partnerships have to be both ways. I'm not really quite sure what I, what I understand your point about this redistribution for additional share of traffic. So are you saying that we hire additional sheriff traffic, traffic enforcement services?
Well, we could, well, that's the-
To offset the crossing guards and get rid of crossing guards?
No, the funding-
So we're gonna still have the crossing guards fee? That's not going away?
Yes, no.
And, but we're gonna take thirteen thousand seven hundred dollars every year and hire a motor cop to patrol these areas?
Well, that could be where the money could go and, and switched.
Based on what I've heard about the cost of a motor cop or motor police officer? It's gonna be far more than thirteen thousand dollars unless they're there for maybe ten minutes a day.
Well, I think you're looking at a much shorter period of time. If you look at the cost of what a motor cop costs, it's in the, in the budget itself. You're looking at probably, I, I would even say that once parents are aware that there's enforcement, people are creatures of habit. When they start doing things well, they're gonna do them. So I don't think you need a motor cop. Only when kids are coming to, maybe it's an hour and a half? Or two hours, coming to school and then after school?
Well, that's three hours a day.
So three hours a day, Captain, how much is a, a motor cop?
If you remember, what we do, we don't have a motor, we don't contract for a motor. What we do is we do a overtime allocation because it's, it's more cost effective for us, so.
How much does a motor cop cost per hour?
It's, I, I, looking through the budget, I think it's in the ninety dollar an hour range. I'll double check real quick. But somewhere, somewhere in that, somewhere in that range. So this would represent about a hundred hours plus or minus?
So maybe you do it for the initial part of when the school year starts?
Well, a hundred hours, but that's, we're talking fifteen hours a day.
No, it wouldn't be fifteen hours a day.
Fifteen hours a week, I'm sorry. Three hours a day times five, a hundred hours isn't gonna last very long.
Well, I don't think, I guess I think I've worked in schools long enough to see that when things are done right and you have enforcement and people get in the-
In other words, what you're saying is give them, give them tickets and they'll learn real quick, not, but, but that's, but that's not gonna make the crossing guards go away. They're still gonna, they're still gonna have crossing guards.
Crossing guards don't go away. What's, what would happen is that the school district to have the same amount of crossing guards that we totally pay, currently pay ninety six thousand dollars for, would have to come up with fourteen thousand dollars more or thirteen thousand seven hundred per year for three years.
But that pays for the police officer.
That would be redistributed into public safety, however you decided to use it. It doesn't have to be specifically for a motor cop, it could be for trainings or-
Somebody's gonna have to pay for the motor cop.
Well, that's what I'm saying, it's an option. That, that would be my best thought, a best use of it. I mean, we can continue to pay ninety six thousand dollars and have no control over what the, the cost of the contract is each year.
But we're gonna continue paying ninety six thousand dollars even your pay?
No, we wouldn't be paying ninety six thousand each year. Because in three years, Tom, that forty one thousand dollars is going away. We're not getting that monies anymore.
Well, we're not gonna have the money.
We're not gonna get it.
Okay, but we have to come up with it somewhere else.
So we're gonna have to come up with that forty one thousand. So my thought is-
And that's where, that's where your thirteen seven hundred comes in.
Well, if we reduce it thirteen seven hundred for three years in a row, by the time it goes away, the school district is picking up fourteen thousand per year. We have the additional monies that come from the gas tax to cover-
Fifty five thousand.
Yes. So there is fifty five thousand dollars, it's not gonna go away, that would be coming into the city as gas tax. So basically what we're asking is that the, the school district supplement the fourteen thousand seven hundred dollars and any increases in fees going forward from the co- the company to make us whole. Does that make sense, more sense to you?
No.
Okay.
I don't.
But you're an attorney and you think differently.
I guess.
Well, actually, I, I have a, I have a question about that. So my, my understanding is crossing guards were previously paid through the general fund. So to me, this is just the right hand switching over to the left hand. The forty one thousand is gonna go away no matter whether we decide this forty one thousand is going to the crossing guards or we're paying the crossing guards out of the general fund.
When we say the forty one thousand's gonna go away, that means we're not gonna get the money to pay for crossing guards from the traffic congestion relief fund.
Yeah, well, un- under the, the current arrangement specific to this fiscal year. So I would imagine if this went away in three years, staff would bring back and suggest we subsidize from the general fund like before, unless there was some alternative revenue that we can draw from or whether the gas tax has enough to cover the ninety six thousand, right? So when, when I, I, I understand what you're saying, but I, I think that issue, what you're getting at is, maybe I see it as being independent of the traffic congestion relief fund. If I see it, there's thirteen thousand seven hundred that you think the school district should pick up over the next three years.
Basically, I think the school district should pick up more than the thirteen thousand seven hundred dollars per year. I don't wanna see that money coming out of the general fund.
Well, that I agree with.
Yeah. So, so I think that, that I think I, I would agree with as well. I just, I guess I, I'm not seeing, at least the way the presentation is structured makes it seem as if this discussion is centered around the traffic congestion relief fund.
No, I think all, all, all council members' strength was suggesting is that in the future, we should look to the school district to help support this fund, the crossing guard funding.
This seemed like a very natural progression into the city council not doing what the school district did to us and saying, sorry, this is the fees, you pay it. I think what it does, it's, it's more of a, a gentle progression saying, we're, you know, we're gonna have to come up with, from our general fund if we continue to say that this is a program we want. I would prefer if I was a school board parent or member to say, well, you know, they've, they've reached out. At least they're asking us to partner and this seems like a natural progression to partner with them, especially because this is funding that we cannot depend on anymore.
So does, so does your proposal then to start at thirteen seven hundred dollars a year for the next three years? And then after those three years, it goes up more than thirteen thousand?
No, I would, I would suggest-
But stays at thirteen seven?
My suggestion is it would stay at the thirteen seven because I feel crossing guards are an important part of-
But isn't the cost of crossing guards gonna continue to rise? Do we know how much the cost has risen over the last number of years?
Yes, and I asked Susan to-
Okay, what was that, what has it been?
Fiscal year two thousand thirteen, their hourly rate was fourteen fourteen.
Okay, what was, what was the total amount we were paying per year that?
Um, and the only cost, I went only went back, went back five years. Fiscal year thirteen fourteen, we paid just under seventy two thousand dollars.
Seventy two thousand?
But I don't know how many hours that is. All I know are the rates went up per hour. So from four, fiscal year, fiscal year twelve thirteen, the hourly rate was fourteen dollars and fourteen cents. And that was for five, over five thousand hours. The current rate right now and the current billing is nineteen dollars and fourteen cents per hour.
Yeah, but I would anticipate over the next five years, it's gonna go up?
Yes.
More than that? So who's gonna pay for that?
Exactly. But I'm just saying this is a start. This is at least a, a start.
No, I agree, we, we need to open up some discussion, there's no question about that. I, I think that, I think we kind of came, when, when you were here, we came to it. That's why we had asked that this issue, we, we weren't prepared to go into it in detail at the time, but we, we identified that something needs to be talked about.
Well, you know, I, I'd like to see, or I mean, if, if you think it needs to be discussed further. I mean, I just think we, we discuss sometimes and we can discuss and then, you know, the budget, the opportunity goes by and it's just harder to, to make an adjustment.
Well, I don't know when the school does their budget, but-
July, I believe.
Do they do, are they in the same fiscal year that we are? I, I don't know, Ken, you know?
I believe schools were, Ken, is it July? July first.
So, so I'm sure they haven't budgeted any of this.
Well, I know they're, they're doing budgets right now because there is discussions with- Yeah, with getting new counselors in and, and different things. So this really is the time if, if we wanna do something to-
Are you suggesting including that in this fiscal year or?
I, I would suggest doing it now because this is the start of the countdown of the three years we have left before this money goes away and then we need to look at where else we're gonna get this funding from.
So you're saying, trying to see if I understand it. So you're saying the budget thirteen thousand seven hundred dollars less for the crossing guard and use that money to-
Into public safety.
To public safety for, to hire a motor, motor cop for, on a full time basis?
Yes, or do something that will help with the congestion around enforcement around the schools.
But we're still, we're still paying for the ninety six thousand of the crossing guards, so in the bud-
Not the ninety six minus the, what is it, thirteen?
Right, but the, the school district hasn't agreed to pay that.
But only if we get it.
So we have to pay something upfront.
What if they say, no, we're not paying that?
Right.
We have to budget something upfront to cover it unless we just say we don't cover that cost.
I, I mean, I look at this in a, in a different viewpoint. We have no control over the monies that we are giving for crossing guards to a third party. If they, if the crossing guards come back tomorrow and say, oh, I'm sorry, but it's twenty four dollars an hour now, you've, you've carte blanche that, you've said, that's fine because we've done this all along. I'm saying we don't need to do this. I mean, I would like to, when we contract with all our other contractors, we know, we approve. We have not done this in, since the inception of us paying crossing guards.
So what you're saying is not only do we not pay these crossing guards at thirteen seven hundred, the school's gonna pay them directly?
No, the school, well, the school pays for two crossing guards right now.
No, I know, but, but the thirteen seven hundred-
They would have to come up with the thirteen thousand seven hundred dollars, just like we-
To pay the crossing guards.
To pay for the crossing guards.
But who are they gonna pay that to, us or the crossing guards?
No, to, the same as us, to the crossing guard company, the contractors, just like we're gonna-
Today's June, June eighteenth, you think that's gonna be done in the next twelve days?
Well, you do what you need to do when you make a budget.
Well, I understand that, but-
I'm just saying, I've been in schools long, long enough to see how budgets work. And when things, sometimes things are cut up until the day the budgets come, Tom. And sometimes funds are reallocated up until the day the budget is approved. I mean, it's, I, I feel very strongly that we have been really, 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 really good to our school district for a long time. I think we can, need to continue building those relationships, but we also need to be realistic. We have a city to run and we have public safety needs that, you know.
I don't disagree with anything you're saying there, but it takes two, okay? And, and, and they, in the past, so far in the past, have not been the other partner in this.
Okay, but how, if they, if-
And so now, now we're gonna go to them and say, I'm sorry, but you don't have a choice. You're going to pay this thirteen seven hundred and you're gonna do it and you're gonna make that decision in the next twelve days?
We, we-
Is that your proposal? Because I don't think that's gonna happen.
Well, if they don't have the money, how are they gonna pay for it?
I don't know.
Well, that's not our problem. It's the school district's problem.
I think it's still our problem because we've, we either say, okay, we're not, we're gonna have thirteen thousand dollars less crossing guards if they don't pay it?
That's up to the school district.
So as I, I think-
I mean, because we're enhancing public safety around the schools with the difference. We're not taking, I don't feel like we're taking anything away. I think we're looking at the redistribution of funds differently. I mean, that's my opinion, I, you know, I feel strongly about it. There's, we, you know, we all come from different places when, but I'm just looking at this from a budgetary standpoint, looking forward, still being a great partner with the school district, giving them fifty six thousand dollars or whatever the difference is to use for crossing guards. We pay for eight, the school district pays for two.
Well, would, would it work if it's kinda like the same argument for the increase in soccer fees? Would it be okay, at least give the school district some notice instead of council?
Sure, I mean, I, I'm fine with the notice, I'm just saying, what, when would we do it? At the mid-budget?
Do they use crossing guards during the summer? Is this a twelve month contract? What, what's the story of this?
No, the, the crossing guards are during the-
School year.
School year.
So it's not even, we're not paying any money right now, this is-
No, but we have to prepare through the year.
We have, we have to do it.
If I can, if I can make a suggestion along the lines of council member you's suggestion is that I give, depending on presuming the council's adoption of the budget today, I give my colleague notice of what the proposed action is of the, of the city council and that before the first quarter budget amendment, that we have some kind of resolution as to what we can work out and I can come back to you so you've have, you won't have lost any, you, we've only gone through one quarter of the budget period and I can come back to you and say, here's what we've discussed with the school district.
Sure, I'm comfortable with that.
Yeah, so that, so, so that gives you kind of the deadline that we're, that it's not just out there and we're just waiting for it to happen but have some kind of definitive endpoint to begin and end the discuss- the discussion.
And, and maybe, Tom, you know, I'm okay also if you wanna say, you know, six months from now, we give them six months notice and the reduction then would be larger, we're gonna pay for half the cost. I mean, I don't know, this seems like the, the least amount of heartache you can give them by doing it gradually in a smaller amount.
Again, I, I don't disagree in principle with what you're talking about at all. I've long been a proponent, as you know, that we need to partner more with these things and- that we need to partner more with these things and, and of course, as you remember, when, when they thrust those fees on us, it was no notice. It was basically no negotiation. It was like, you either pay it or you find another location and that's what we did.
And we had to.
We found other locations because we couldn't afford to pay it. And so I, I don't disagree with the, with the premise of all of this. I'm just gotta figure out in my head how these numbers are gonna work and especially when you brought up the fact that we're gonna hire additional traffic enforcement, uh, how that's gonna play out and stuff.
Well, because it's, the funds are designated for, um, what is it, traffic congestion?
Oh, I know, we can use it for that.
So we can use it for that.
Yeah, I understand that part, but.
But that part is really open.
I, I just think that, that's a, I think that might be a little bit low, that, that number, uh, as to what we, we may get from our, our, our motor cops. Uh, if we're paying close to a hundred dollars an hour, um, and again, it raises the issue, where are these motor cops going to be? Are they gonna be at the high school? Are they going to be at Longdon? Are they gonna? They can't be in five, six different schools at once.
So I would say during the week, you pick a different school and rotate.
So it's gonna be, uh. I mean, that, that's, those logistics have to be worked out as well.
That's only if they're available to work overtime.
Well, yeah, and if they have them, so.
Right, if they were available.
Yeah, it, it, it's, I, I just have been, it, I just recall that it's been, one of the reasons why we do not budget a motor cop is because of the expense and that's why we've gone to that as-needed basis, so.
So with that direction, what the direction that Susan and I will take will be for me tomorrow, pending the budget adoption by the council that to begin discussions, that then, then I report back to the council during our first quarter budget adjustment, the discussions related to this amount that the school district would be potentially contributing towards a crossing guards. Is that, is that?
Well, I would, I would suggest maybe a different approach is bring up this matter in the context of catalyzing the standing committee meeting, cause I.
I, I agree because, you know, you, I don't think, first of all, you don't have the authority to do it and neither does she. I think it has to be at the, at the, at the board and council level and that's why we formed that standing committee. I appreciate the fact that you get that conversation going, cause it goes quicker, but I don't know when you guys have your next meeting scheduled. It, it sounds to me like you may not even have a meeting until September if they, if they, uh, if they do what they have done in the past, because it's summertime and the whole place closes down, it seems to be.
Well, what we could suggest is like set a clock for them and say, look, this is what we plan on doing, but we'd rather discuss this in the setting of a school board representative and council representative to discuss this amongst other issues in detail. But if they're not motivated to do it, then we can exercise what council member Sternquist is suggesting.
I would do both. I would, I would go at both levels, you know, at your level and then at the city manager superintendent level.
And, and I think both, both levels because if two council members are liaisons to the school board, you can trust you're gonna get pushback. I don't want it to just die there and say, okay, there was no interest on the school boards.
Correct. Correct.
Side because.
Yeah, so I, I, I agree with Mayor Protem in that it shouldn't be done strictly at a staff level. There definitely needs to be a council and board discussion specific to that in the context of what you've, you've talked about.
I'm, I'm more than comfortable with that. I just think that, that the time is now for, you know, that discussion. I, I'm just afraid going forward that we, we, we have to look at ways to save money and, and remember, we're paying an additional forty some thousand dollars to the school district in this current budget from last year.
Who, who determines, and this is something that maybe you wanna talk about maybe in the discussion, who determines where they have the crossing guards, when they work, how they work, who, who, do we, do we determine that or does the school determine that?
Unfortunately, Mr. Arizumi is out sick today, so he would be able to answer that question a little bit more fully than I can, but in my discussions with Mr. Arizumi, they're historically the areas that they, the school and the, and the city have identified as problematic, or let me rephrase that, areas that, uh, were in need of, of, uh, additional supervision in, uh, transporting kids in and from the school. So, um, it's usually been a joint discussion. Uh, the last two, uh, the prior, the last two, I think the prior superintendent, uh, uh, notified us but took some action on their own related to that one.
I just feel that, I feel that if we're paying for something, shouldn't we have more of a input into how that money is being used or? I mean, I, I don't know if it's being used, uh, you know, well or not well, or, I mean, it might be, they're doing the greatest job they can, but since we have no say-so in that, how do we know that? I think, but we're, we're writing the checks. So that, that puts us in a, I think, a vulnerable position, so.
So I'll take that as, we won't have to have that as formal budget, but we'll take that as direction.
Ryan, just one last question. Tom brought up a point. I'm wondering because we pay directly to the crossing guard company, do they have to give us special certificates of insurance or are we liable for their actions or inactions?
They are, they are a contractor no different than any other contractor. We ask for a specific certificates of insurance and indemnification language and whatnot, so yeah, we treat them like any other contractor and the insurance requirements that are, that are acceptable to the city.
But we never go out for like RFP or we just pay the increases.
We have not, the, the, the company we use is a nationally known entity who does this throughout California. I don't know the last time the city, this is probably one of the last contracts. We looked at for RFP. I'm not sure how, honestly, I'm not sure how much we're gonna yield in terms of savings related to going out to RFP because, uh, most of the individuals are paid close to minimum wage.
I can't believe there's that many companies out there that actually do it.
Yeah, I, I don't know, but we can, we can take a look. We always take a look.
So I have a question. So we have a separate contract, school district has a separate contract, same company?
Yes, they, they use the same exact company, um, and they actually used, and they negotiated off of our rates with the, with the company as well.
They what? Negotiated off of our rates?
Same rates.
Oh, same rate, well, I would hope so. Any other questions, council questions?
Thank you.
Keep comments.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and, uh, open.
No, that, uh, few, few, we got a few, few more items to go through.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Sorry, um, so.
I'm already ready, go home.
The next item is our capital improvement plan. And this is a multi-year. Last year you received a five-year plan. Um, this year we're only able to show four years for you. So, um, if you look at the bottom, you'll look at the total unfunded for the four years. It's almost twenty eight million dollars. Um, and funding sources we found is thirteen million dollars for those, uh, CIP projects that we'd like to, to put through.
So with this as well, um, another item we'll be bringing back for the first quarter, uh, budget amendment is actually a deep dive into our multi-year CIP plan. Um, there's, there's a lot of things that we have to address. There's some things that we'd like to address and there's some things that would, are kind of wishless items as well. So we wanna be able, this is a kind of a comprehensive look at what we know of our wants, our needs, and maybe likes-to-haves. And so we wanna be able to have a deep dive with you on that. So for today, you know, we'll, we'll, this is part of the overall context of the budget, but we wanna have a deeper dive during the first quarter budget amendment to really take some time and dedicate, almost, almost like, almost like a mini study session to really go and look out over the next four to five years about the capital needs of the project, because as, as funding starts to become more scarce, especially on the general fund reserve side, which I'll talk about in just another moment, about what we're proposing to do uh, with some general fund reserves related to CIP, the council and the staff, we're gonna have to have a dialogue about what some of those needs are. Our buildings, the depreciation of our buildings and other things as well are gonna really hit us in the next few years, so we'll have to talk about that in a little bit more depth, but we'd like to talk about that more, much more comprehensively, uh, during the first quarter, first quarter budget discussion.
I, I have a question. All right, Brooke, do we, do we have a dedicated staff or, uh, that, that looks for funding and looks for different uh, ways of looking for paying for these things or is it dependent on where it is and how it is? I mean, how do you? How is that handled? Do we have a plan?
When it, when it comes, when it comes to CIP, it's really a combination of myself, the community development director, admin service director, and depending on the, uh, depending on the structure, our parks department, so our executive team really looks at what's, what's available in terms of funding, in terms of their specific areas of expertise as well. Um, one of the things we'd like to do with a deep dive with you and, uh, is kind of identifying where, and we've already had part of that discussion earlier this year related to some of the parks projects and some of the funding that look from parks project stuff, but all kind of having a deep dive and looking and saying, okay, here's where your special funds are going with, for, for example, Measure W or other fundings and kind of diving down and understanding some of the choices, quite frankly, that we're gonna have to make, cause there's no way we're gonna be able to fund forty million dollars for the CIPs. It's not, not gonna be able, it's, that's not gonna be possible. Those are just.
But what I'm asking is there's somebody that, that we have that's out there looking for that forty million?
We use avant-garde to assist us in identifying, uh, uh, grants, but there's not anybody specifically on staff that we, we utilize, but myself, our staff and our executive team try to do what the best we can.
It would appear to me that because funding is getting so difficult, that maybe it's something that we should consider in the future to maybe have someone that actually, that's the main component of their job is to look for these things, because it sounds to me as we get further and further down the road and these funds become less and less available, we're gonna need somebody on top of that twenty-four seven and, uh, rather than, um, rely on more of a hit and miss kind of situation. I, I, but again, that's for a discussion for another day. Maybe when we do your deep dive, we can talk about something.
Yeah, I have a comment on, on this, uh, Mayor. You know, I appreciate what, um, the city manager and, um, director Parag has brought, brought into us, brought attention to the multi-year capital improvement projects. Because it's a way that we're really planning ahead. I mean, we always like to, to say that we're proactive. And, but without a, a, a projection of future, here we are, um, approving a budget for this year, but what we didn't know that, you know, there may be more and more needs and I think this is kind of giving us a, a glimpse into the future. Um, but yeah, at the same time, I appreciate what the, the manager has, has said that the deep dive would, would help us just to look at how much of these needs are, are minimally needed because if something's failing or there's a change in legislature or there's a change in best practice or maybe something just nice to have and, and maybe the change in program. So to help us really see how much of that, let's say the twenty-eight million dollar in the next four years, how much of that is really needed and then to, uh, Mayor Protem's point, then we can really start looking for, let's say there are programs that we really need, there are some real needs out there that we need to then start looking for funding opportunities. Or if it's really needed, then we may have to bite the bullet and consider maybe really need to, to dig, dig deep into our reserve or have to cut somewhere else. And the director, Director Parag has said, we have been able to maintain all the, the same level of service. But if there are some real needs, some deferred maintenance needs in the future, because it's much easier to fix a roof than wait for the roof to collapse, right? Um, that kind of analogy, so to help us make better decisions. So I appreciate what the city manager said and, and hopefully, I'm looking for that um, uh, study session, cause, um, not every city or, not every municipality would do these projections, so I appreciate what's being done.
And I'll take the next couple as, as well. So just kind of going through, so that's looking at four years. For the next year, and I just wanna point out a couple of things, uh, you, five hundred thousand dollars is being proposed to be taken from the general fund reserves this year. Three hundred thousand of that is for several of the resurfacing projects, cause SB one money, uh, requires a hundred and five thousand dollar, a hundred, one hundred and five thousand dollar match. What we're gonna have to look at in future years as well is that we're gonna be, and you can make the argument that we should be looking at that from a operating budget standpoint as well. We haven't been, we've been looking at it just from drawing down on reserves. I, next year I would suggest we look at that and say, okay, that should probably be, if we're, if we're committed to getting that SB one money, which why wouldn't we wanna be committed to looking at money that, uh, that pays for, uh, pavement improvement, that that be part of the operating budget going forward. So right now you're taking it from reserves and hopefully this year, that three hundred thousand, if the legislation comes through, you'll be, you'll, you'll be kind of capturing some, some of that back this year, but on a go-forward basis, um, you can really look at that as an ongoing obligation of the general fund going forward and in future budgets, we'll have to look at that. So that's embedded in the Las Tunas Drive resurfacing and, um, the Roseme Boulevard resurfacing. And if you go to the next slide, that's also embedded in the pavement management, one point six million dollar, uh, project. That project has not been determined. We will be going back to the standing committee showing, going through the, uh, updated, um, pavement management program and identifying with our city engineer and public, and community development director, uh, their recommendations as to, as we have in the past, in terms of what we would do and some of the logic that's behind some of that repaving. So those are the CIPs going forward. And with that, the pie kind of shows where, we're getting most of our money. And to Councilmember Chavez's point, most of that money is, um, I'm gonna use a technical term here, uh, subvention funds, meaning we're getting those from the state and other places automatically, uh, through either metro money, measure R, measure M, gas tax to states, that, what they technically call subventions. Um, very little is coming from any other funding source. You see the five hundred thousand in general fund there. So with that, next, thank you, Susan. So our major funding again is, is from regional measures and as Susan pointed out last time, there is no local revenue source to deal with that's consistent and ongoing to deal with roads, to deal with any other longer-term maintenance, infrastructure issues.
What would be an example of a local revenue source that, let's say, other cities perhaps use to do those types of things?
Some cities dedicate a portion of, if they have an additional add-on sales tax or road type tax or others that could pay for the, to pay for that funding. Are they dedicated?
So it's just tax increases?
Generally, generally it's tax or fee increases that usually find a way to fund those sources, fund, fund those activities.
Or maybe, um, infrastructure improvement district type of.
There's infrastructure improvement and there, there is one more, um, which Mr. Forbes will be bringing back to you shortly is our development impact fees. But usually development impact fees you have to look at in a bit of a vacuum, because generally they are usually one-time. They are not ongoing revenue sources. They usually, and they're, generally you wanna make a nexus between what the development fee that's being assessed and where it's being kind of, it's not, not specific that way, but usually you'll, Mr. Forbes will be bringing a pretty thorough presentation to you in the next couple of months related to development impact fees, but that would be the other source. But I would, I would suggest the council that you need to look at that as more one-time rather than ongoing.
I remember years ago, we used to go to these conferences, they always would promote these, what, BIPs or PIPs?
Yeah, BIPs, business improvement district.
Are those no longer around or still?
They're, they're, but.
People still using those?
There are business improvement districts, there are other funding sources for, for, yeah. And that's something we should obviously look at in the future related to economic development.
Isn't that a revenue source?
I, I wouldn't suggest that as a revenue source for infrastructure though. It's more for.
But, but for capital improvement projects.
Well, yeah, and usually a lot of those business improvements districts, they use it so a, a city will invest and it put in an actual, initial capital investment into infrastructure and the BID will help with the long-term maintenance of those types, of that type of infrastructure investment going forward. So I'm stealing all of Susan's thunder here, so I'll do the last slide, Susan. So we'll discuss this in the, in the deeper dive. These are the unfunded, uh, uh, projects that were identified in the five-year, but we'll take a deeper dive into that during the, um, first quarter budget. budget. So I'll let Susan take over from there.
So before I go to the next slide, council had questions at the Budget Study-
Thank you.
-session. So we, one question was, should we recategorize the Chamber of Commerce payment from Economic Development? We can, we can put it under other, if that's preferred. It'll still be the same account number, it'll just be categorized as other payments. Law enforcement budget for miscellaneous law enforcement activities, why did the budget get reduced? That was the one Councilmember Sternquist asked about, going from twenty thousand to, I believe, seventy-five hundred. And what it was, was this year, we had budgeted for the Ring Program, whereas next year-
Are we on the right?
No, I'm sorry.
No, these are just-
It's additional information, sorry.
Oh, I see, okay.
Yes. Why did the bus shelter maintenance budget increase? We included a five thousand dollar increase for structure, anticipating for structure repairs and painting, when they get damaged, and the glass has to be replaced, things like that. Can an additional Parks and Recreation Commissioner attend a conference for a total of three commissioners? If there is a demand for the conference, we can accommodate, however, in the past, only one or two were interested and attended, that's why we only budget for two. And is there a crossing guard at Emperor Elementary School, or any schools in the unincorporated parts of the city? No, we do not have crossing guards there.
We do, or we don't?
We do not.
Do not?
Do not, don't, we don't have any.
Is that because it's in an unincorporated area?
Correct, yes. It would be the county-
But do they have crossing guards there?
That I don't know.
We don't know that. Would that be an area where they hired a crossing guard, where we haven't provided one?
Possibly, the two schools this week-
I don't know, we, I heard that they have two crossing guards they pay for, maybe one of them's at Emperor.
Well, that's one, we can follow up on that, I don't know.
I would think that that would make the most sense.
I don't know. So find out, we'll follow up.
And then we discussed the history, the cost history of the crossing guards, so that was it. So the last slide is our future issues. As Mr. Cook mentioned, economic development will come back at the first quarter budget review.
If I could take those two first bullets, sorry, thank you, Mr. Parag. So the council had asked about economic development, and what I'd like to do in that first, so we're gonna have a little bit more of a robust discussion at our first quarter budget amendment. So I'd like to take some time to develop a plan that would probably, quite honestly, be taken from, potentially from reserves, to do some economic development activity, which I'll talk to you about going forward. The other one is three of you, or several of you receive updates from the Clean Power Alliance related to rate increases. The Clean Power Alliance, as you know, has been dealing with the challenges and issues with Edison, and one of the things that they have proposed is, or, and they recently passed, is an increase to the tariffs, so there's, it's a long, complicated discussion, but there are different rates for different municipal services, our buildings versus our streetlights versus our signal and everything else, and they have different tariff rates. The cost that Edison is passing on because of the loss of the customers from Clean Power Alliance, from Edison to Clean Power Alliance, and some of those stranded costs, the PUC has allowed them to pass some of those costs on. In order to keep the rate structures in place, and keep, for residential customers and some commercial customers, they are passing on, and this is just an estimate at this time, will come back during the first quarter budget adjustment as well, they are proposing some increases in our tariffs that impact our street lighting system. We estimate that that cost could be on the very, very high end, but we gotta do a deeper dive on this, we just literally got that information this week, is gonna be around fifty thousand dollars above what we've budgeted so far. But fortunately, our Landscape and Lighting District has a strong enough surplus that we will be able to absorb that cost, and have the, if the legislation, Senator Rubio's legislation passes, be able to reimburse the city back its subsidy of three hundred and eighty thousand dollars.
Fifty thousand is a cost to us, as a city?
That would be the cost, yes, to the city, and-
But then, my understanding is that the consumers are going to also have a rate increase on their bills, is that correct?
We haven't gone through that issue yet, it looks like for those who, the city's default rate is the lowest default rate of thirty-six percent renewables, it appears at least at this time, that those savings will be somewhat intact for those customers. The increases have just been passed on to the tariff rates for right now, that relate to municipal facilities like our street lighting.
Can you refresh my recollection on this? Do we, do we as a city have the right to get out of this situation, or is that up to the individual users?
It's-
Or has that passed?
The, the ability to opt-out is an ability for each individual user, commercial account and residential account, and that's been around a little less, I think the reports have been a little less than, three percent of the customers in Temple City have opted out. We as an agency could potentially opt-out, but we cannot be selective in the manner in which we do that, and I would, I would-
What do you mean selective in the manner in which we do that?
We can't, we can't decide, we either, we have to, we either go in wholesale or we don't, for all of our accounts together.
No, I understand that, you either, you either participate as a city, or you don't participate as a city.
Right. And before we do that, and the city's committed, had, or we voted to join the Clean Power Alliance, I would suggest that before we even consider that, we'd have to do a kind of full-fledged analysis to understand where these rates are going, and what-
And I understand that, but, you know, every email I get from Clean Power Alliance seems to have some side of language regarding rate increases. At some point in time, I think we're gonna have to take a look at this as a council, if this, because, you know, certainly one of the driving forces in joining this Clean Power Alliance was not only the fact that it was going to help the environment, but also result in savings to both the city and our local constituents, but if that's no longer true, then I think that has an impact on, on what we do as a, as a whole as well. But, I mean, that's my opinion, let alone, I don't know how the rest of you feel, but I get my bill, I can't figure out who I'm paying, and how much I'm paying. So it's become a little bit interesting, to say the least, and I had no doubt, and I think I expressed that at the time, that Edison was not going to stand by idly, or Clean Power Alliance took all their clients from them. And that's exactly what I see is happening now, and they are fighting back, and PUC seems to be on their side at this point, so.
But I think the question comes down to, we need to do our analyses to see the rate decreases, if there is any, versus the, what Edison is collecting from us.
No, and I'm not proposing that we didn't definitely jump out of this, but I would, you know, I'd like to keep an eye on this and see, I don't like the direction it's going so far, I don't think it's to our benefit, and if it keeps going in that direction, I think it's something that we need to take a look at as, as city leaders, I think.
As Councilmember Yosted, well, we, we need to do the due diligence to make sure we understand and kind of where it's going, we just felt that we, we just wanted to give you a heads-up, that this may be, we didn't want you to be surprised, we come with a first quarter budget amendment and say, hey, surprise, there's a fifty, or an X amount increase, so that, and you say, why didn't you present this, Brian, during the, or give us at least a heads-up, that this may be a possibility coming, when we discussed it during the budget. So with that, Susan has the rest. Thank you.
We're almost there. So the next one is, as you all know, the CalPERS changes, and their amortization policy will be effective in the next fiscal year of 2021. We also have ongoing negotiations with our bargaining unit. The annual increases in our contract services costs, there's also talk of a recession at the end of this year, or beginning of 2020, that could affect some of our revenues. And lastly, we also need to address the funding of our unfunded liabilities, such as the Pension Fund and the Post-Employment Fund, Post-Employment Benefit Fund. And with that, if we, I have not heard any recommendation to add or delete from the current proposed budget, we will, most of it will address in the first quarter review next year. So I recommend that the council adopt the proposed fiscal year 2019-20 budget, including, well, there's no revisions made tonight, and review and approve the updates to the General Fund Reserve classification, we reviewed it earlier, so.
I just want to make a comment before we move on, and on the last issue, on the funding of the unfunded liabilities, I think I brought it up before, and perhaps the time is more ripe than, than, than a few years ago, when we discussed this topic of, is there any way to, that the city, along with some other cities, and looking at what they're doing, looking at how we can better handle these unfunded liabilities. I know under the CalPERS way of doing business, it was very hard to really reduce that, but there may be, at least at the time, we looked at it, so we decided to stay in with whatever we have, but there might be some things we can do in the future, and like the City Manager and Director Parag has to bring this back to us. And granted, we may not see the benefit for another twenty-five, thirty years, but again, it goes to our point of looking to the future and be proactive and thinking for the city in the future, so.
Yeah, and one of the items we'd like to look into for 1920 is a possible study of how some of the, maybe a second tier for our Post-Employment Benefits would affect us. We'll probably look for a consultant to do that study for us-
Right.
-and see what options we have to lower our liabilities.
Yeah.
Thank you. Do we have any other additional comments from council?
Yes, Mayor Fish. So I want to go back to the future issue on economic development. So in the, in the budget, we currently have twenty-five thousand allocated under the City Manager section for economic development. Is that adequate to allow the development of this framework that will be discussed prior to the first quarter budget amendment? Is that the intended use of that twenty-five thousand? I know it's kind of labeled generically as economic development, but I guess what I'm getting at is, is there, maybe get some more clarity as to what that specifically is gonna, in the past, we had that number in there specifically for hiring of consultants like, say, Cosmont, who has helped us with a variety of issues, so are you saying that that twenty-five thousand is gonna be part of the framework for this first quarter?
Yes, it would be, and to be quite frank with you, it'll probably be an additional funding above that, to do some, some ideas that I'd like to run by the council, before we do that, to talk about, you know, for example, deeper dive analyses of, a deeper dive analysis of opportunity sites and other things as well. So there, it would, I would anticipate it being more than that.
And I would suggest that that discussion for economic development be not directly lumped into the same meeting with the budget adjustment, but be dedicated to the issue-
Yeah, I agree.
-so that we can kind of look at the issues first, and then decide what the budget requirements are for any choices that we have.
Understood.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Did you have anything? No. Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and open the public hearing for this item, seeing that, okay.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, and Councilmembers, Chair Jam Azin. Just to piggyback a little bit on what Councilmember Mann was talking about in economic development, I remember years ago, Temple City was pretty strong in economic development, and I'm just wondering, are we getting all the bang for our buck from our staff? And is it possible that we're missing some staff, or some staff could be realigned to devote at least maybe half of their time to economic development? It just seems like this person could pay their salary and even more if they were doing their job properly, and it just seems like we're missing the boat here, and we're talking about it, but really not doing anything about it. So the city's done pretty well, as far as attracting new businesses to come into the city, but it could possibly even do better. The last subject that I want to talk, and I don't want to beat a dead horse to death, but crossing guards. Didn't we add three crossing guards a couple of years ago? I'm talking about Camino Real, Emperor, and possibly Lemon, and who paid for those? Did the city pay for them, or did the school district pay for them? Does anybody know?
Well, apparently, we don't provide a crossing guard at Emperor.
No.
Are you saying we did it one time?
No, no. I'm talking about Camino Real-
I thought you said Emperor.
Emperor at Street.
Oh, the street.
At Oak.
Oh, okay.
At Oak, I'm sorry, I didn't make myself clear.
You just said Emperor, I didn't know what-
I'm sorry, yes.
So Emperor at Oak, meaning Longdon.
You're right, you're right, yeah. So I think three were added, maybe, I want to say maybe three years ago, maybe four years ago, and I'm wondering-
You know, to Councilmember Sternquist's point, I think it's kind of flown under the radar for a long time, but I, I don't remember ever really discussing crossing guards in any great detail.
I never have.
I think when the school district start charging us, I did bring that at one point, I said, look, not to, not to take away crossing guard, I just, at the time, I said, well, the school district needs to know how much service we're providing without charging them, and, because their argument at the time was, well, we're charging what we're charging, because that's what's cost us. And I said, well, there are other things we're doing that we didn't charge you, and I did bring up the crossing guard, just maybe, just as a topic.
Well, and to your point, though, and I remember I was part of that Standing Committee at the time, we, we did bring those things to their attention about, well, remember, this is what we do provide, and this is the value of that, and unfortunately, it didn't go very far at the time, so.
And other nice things, like the ten thousand dollars for band uniforms, and, you know, we do, we do other things, and we're doing scoreboards.
The flooring, the flooring at, yeah, the, at the basketball court.
Yeah, I think the perception is that, that they're still, they're still providing more than we do, unfortunately, and I, you know, I think it's just a way of looking at things, I mean, I'm not saying it to say that they're right or wrong, but they seem to look at things differently than we do.
I just think that we need to have a better, better handle on, we should be able to know that answer, who's paying for what.
I agree, but, you know, and not to their defense, but, you know, unfortunately, school district has been going through a lot of issues in the last year and stuff, and, you know, that may have caused a little bit of the disconnect, but it's time to get back on that, that road, I think, again, so. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, John. Are there any other?
Mayor Fish, Mayor Protem, or Chavez, Councilmembers, city staff. I think we need to have a joint meeting between the school district and the City Council to resolve the issue of the crossing guards. I see a lot of cones by all these schools, we're spending untimely energy on this, and the problem's not getting solved. We're bringing more crossing guards in, bringing more cones in there, and one of the things that could be done to address this, and I saw this when I lived in Huntington Beach, where if the parents weren't gonna obey the law, then they sent a letter to the parents advising them, you were seen on this date not obeying the law, you know, and it seemed to work there. And, you know, it, something needs to be done here, we shouldn't be spending all this money on crossing guards when the district should be paying a part of it. You know, it's not worth us to be paying all that money when the district- You know, it's not worth us to be paying all that money when the district really isn't doing, doing anything, like Cloverly is a good example. There's no place for the parents to drop off the kids. I spoke to the principal a couple of times. District needs to make that loop, you know, that's in front there. They need to extend that into the field and back out in the street longer so the parents can get in there. That's, that whole thing there goes back to the forties probably, maybe the twenties. It needs to be brought up to date. They brought up to date the buildings, but not the access for the parents. You know, they got cones down Cloverly down there. And when I go to St. Luke's Church sometimes in the morning, it gets very congested there with both schools. You know, and it, it's mainly the parents at Cloverly. St. Luke's has places for the parents to drop off the kids. Cloverly doesn't. And the, the, the principal there at Cloverly, he was the one that suggested extending that drive for the parents to get in there. And the district needs to look at this and decide what the, what they can do to help out. Because it's not fair to the city. They need to have joint ca- meetings between the council. And, and the school board to address these issues together. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other additional public comments? I'm going to close public comments. And, um, do we have any questions or comments from council? All right.
Mayor, Mayor Fish, if I may just one, one last thing. So, um, I, I just want to make a comment about the, the CIP discussion. So I, I do want to reiterate one thing Mr. Cook brought up about incorporating some of the road resurfacing things as part of the operational budget. I think we've talked about that rationale for many other things, not, not just related to infrastructure. So I think as, I think that's just good practice to try to think about that, especially if this is perpetual and ongoing. Um, the second thing is, um, Mayor Protem brought up the idea of business improvement districts, which we've kind of touched on and off in the past. Um, and then I think that kind of, all of that comes full circle with a little bit of what Mr. Jambezen had also commented about is, you know, there's things that. I would say we don't truly know how much benefit certain things bring to our city because maybe we haven't really done our homework. Um, and, and I think part of, at the last budget study session, when I was bringing up the economic development side. It kind of does relate to this issue of, you know, who do we have on staff dedicated to this particular goal, right? And, and I think council member, you mentioned, we have a specific plan. We have. Um, landowners that are interested in carrying out the specific plan from the private development side. What role does the city play? What mechanism is there to facilitate that? I, I think that needs to be restated to the point where we realize how important that connection is. And why I was so adamant that the, the budget needs to, at some point, reflect that when we have a more cohesive plan together. Because on, on, on the surface, you look at twenty-five thousand for economic development, that's just, to me, that's nothing. I'll, I'll just be honest about it. That's, that, that's a piddling amount compared to what we're spending for everything else. And, and if we're, like, Mr. Jambezen said, we do a lot of talking, but you know, I think the budget needs to reflect the action that that's taken. So, so I'm sure at the first quarter budget amendment, Mr. Cook is going to have a phenomenal presentation for us on economic development and blow us out of the water, so.
Yeah, I'll just, just let me just second that because, uh, the whole point at the time, when we, when we used the, if I, if my memory serves me right. And one and a half million dollars from the reserve to do the studies. And the whole point at the time, we're discussing, well, this, this was great tools in our toolbox for economic development. We're going to do these things first. We're going to ER in place, so we're going to attract developers, so they, when they come in, all they have to do is validate the environmental impact report that we're preparing. We're ready to go. But, well, the report's getting almost been done and over and where's our next step? And I think, I even, I, I think there, there were even at least one or two owners that came out a lot and that came to us and said, well. City, uh, what can you do to help us to, to move, move this along? And we haven't done much, honestly, since we have done the plan. So, so I second what you said that.
Yeah, and, and just maybe one, one more, one more thing on that is, one thing, like, in the past, we've, we've had. I would call sporadic sort of outreach and other things that might resemble some form of economic development. But really, I would say it's maybe more on the surface. Not to say it's not important, but it's just, we started something, but it didn't seem like we can ever push it to a point where. Where it becomes more like an institutionalized framework of economic development. Like, for example, one thing I learned personally last year was. The best way to get feedback from our businesses is we have to go to them. So if we don't have someone on staff dedicated to, I'm not saying that's what we should do, but someone that is dedicated to have that sort of. I call it a personal touch to economic development. I think, I think that's what we're lacking. Sure, consultants are great at bringing in their expertise, but consultants aren't staff. They're not here perpetually. Businesses can't like call our consultants and say, hey, I need this, right? They can't call them and say, I need to talk to someone who works and represents the city. Uh, and how the city can help me as a small business or whatnot. So, uh, yeah, I, I just, I'm bringing that up just because I'm, I'm hoping the first quarter budget amendment will start addressing those at a, at a granular level. And, um, not, not relying on some of our grander capital improvement projects to magically solve the issue. We talk about Lestunas all the time as a key component of economic development, but I don't think any of us are expecting that if we do something on Lestunas. It's going to magically suddenly transform the economic development landscape. That's just one piece of the puzzle, right? Um, so, yeah, that's, that's what I'm hoping to see in the next three months.
I think our problem has been for too long is we tend to rely on the private sector to push this along. They, the private sector is great, but they don't share the vision necessarily of the entire city. And I think it's something that we need to be more, have more in the game, so to speak, and, and work obviously with the private sector since. Uh, well, our biggest problem has always been, we don't own a lot of property in the city, and so our, our, our resources are, and what we can do are limited. That doesn't mean we can't have those discussions, uh, and help facilitate, uh, those developments as well. And you're right. I mean, I remember in my last State of the City address, which was five years ago, we talked about the development of Kmart. And, um, it's still the same. Um, and, you know, that, that's a prime example, I think.
You know, I'm, I'm wondering, Mr. Cook, how much we work with the economic partnership? Had a meeting with, um, Bill Manis last week, the, um, director of the partnership. And, um, it was interesting. He, he came out and he was telling us of all the, um, things that they have in the works for. He mentioned a few cities of, um, you know, taking a look at the city and the land that's available and what they're doing to reach out. And I know we pay dues to them, so I'm wondering if we're taking full advantage of that. Maybe we can even have Bill come out to, um, one of our council meetings and share what he's doing in the San Gabriel Valley with some of the other cities. And partner a little bit more with them. They are a resource and we are paying, um, yearly dues to have them advocate for us. Are, are we still ha- or do we still have that, um, I guess it was something where they use a website? And we can plug into it and put all the op- rentals that we have available?
Mm-hmm. Well, it's called the Power Site, uh, with the, is, San Gabriel Valley Economic Partnership. And yeah, that is still active. I was just checking it recently as I wasn't able to make their last meeting. Uh, but they are, they're still active with that. And I can talk to Bill. I'll be, I'll be at their next board meeting in two more months as well. I'll, I'll talk to him before then as well.
But he can come out and we can let them see what they can do for us to help.
Well, if you recall, a few years ago, we were having some discussions and, and activity with that, that entity. But, uh, that just went away and we have an ending.
Well, we did, when, I think it was, um, with Mayor Fish and I went out to ICSC in Las Vegas. They, we were able to share their booth to help promote.
That was about three years ago.
That was quite some time ago. So maybe we can do something again with them.
Just a thought. Okay, thank you. Okay, no additional questions? I will entertain a motion.
So, Madam Mayor, I move that we approve Resolution Number nineteen dash fifty-four oh four, adopting the budget and approving appropriations for the city of Temple City. For the fiscal year commencing July first, twenty nineteen and ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty.
Second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Mann?
Yes.
Councilmember Sternquist?
Yes.
Councilmember you?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Chavez?
Yes.
Mayor Fish?
Yes, thank you.
Mayor Fish, I'd just like to thank, uh, the executive team and management team putting this budget together. Uh, and, and to Susan as well for all their work over the last few months.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to be moving on to item nine, unfinished business, none. Item ten, new business, none. Item eleven, update from city manager.
Actually, going to defer, uh, my presentation to Captain Flores for just a quick moment.
Hello, Mayor, City Council. I would just like to, um, remind everybody about a week ago, uh, one of our department members was murdered in the city of Alhambra. Deputy Joseph Solano. Uh, several members of Temple Station, uh, were either in his academy class or worked with him. He was working at, uh, USC Medical Center. We have a jail ward there in the hospital. And, uh, he was m- murdered and, in Alhambra, just, uh, on the twelfth. So, um, we are holding a fundraiser for Deputy Solano's family. It will be, uh, tomorrow from eleven-thirty to six P.M. here at Temple City Park. And so I'd like to thank, uh, the city and Kathy Burrows for helping facilitate that and allow us to have, uh, that fundraiser there. Uh, a couple of our deputies have interest in a restaurant, uh, and they will be donating, uh, all the, the meals. So we're asking for about a ten dollar donation for, uh, a meal there. Uh, it's fish tacos and things like that, Baja style. Uh, but it'll be tomorrow. And so, uh, we would love to have your support. All the money will go to the family. He has a, a son, a longtime girlfriend and a daughter that, uh, they were together. So, uh, we would really like to support him. And I know, uh, many, many times, every time we have something, uh, they're saying, let us know. So here I am, uh, letting you know. So, thank you very much.
Is that, Dave, is that going to be, um, a, a food truck or is it going to be like a booth set up out there?
It's kind of like a, uh, like when the taco guy comes out, uh, it's kind of portable.
Oh, okay, so they have a, like a tent. Are we going to set up a tent, Kathy, or are there?
Yeah, they have, they're going to set, uh.
Cause I saw some, um, some of the, um, barriers over on, uh.
On the corner.
Corner. Is that for that?
Yes, it's where it's going to be.
Yeah, so, uh, the deputies will, they'll get some tables and easy ups and things like that, but, uh, it's Baja style. Uh, fish tacos, uh, fish and shrimp, and sometimes he has like a ceviche tostada, uh, plate, but, um, yeah. So very, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Captain.
Ryan, did you have anything?
Madam Mayor.
Okay.
Well, our first summer concert, first.
Sorry, I, I was going to assume someone else was going to announce, but we do have our first summer, summer concert starting. Our summer concert series starts tomorrow for, um, many, many weeks to come throughout the summer. So, uh, seven, uh.
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Oh, seven P.M.
Seven P.M.
And it's electric.
Final.
Final, electric final. Which is, again?
I don't know. They performed last year, but they were.
Oh, okay.
Contemporary hits.
Contemporary hits, okay. Thank you. Update from our city attorney.
George, just very briefly, uh, because this was also mentioned in the legislative report that you approved as part of the consent calendar. But Assembly Bill seventeen sixty-three is moving forward. Uh, that would provide a density bonus of eighty percent. Uh, for any project that is going to commit to being a hundred percent affordable units. Uh, would take, uh, if, if our allowed density would be ten units on a site, it would let that site go up to eighteen units. Uh, but all of the units would have to be, um, designated and restricted for, uh, low or very low income persons and families. Just something we're watching, uh, League of California Cities is opposing because they want to contain, uh, maintain local control over these. Um, but it does show the legislative priority is tilting heavily in favor of building housing, so.
And, and, and the key point is very low income, right?
Low and very low, correct.
Low and very.
Yeah, yes, sir. So that's it for tonight. I knew we were going to be late with the budget. Just wanted to bring that to your attention.
Thank you. Council reports regarding ad hocs or standing committee meetings.
I guess we can give an update on the schedule for, for the commissioner ad hoc.
Oh. I, I just got another, um, before the meeting tonight. Peggy, do you want to give us an update on the schedule?
The schedule, okay.
Uh, the ad hoc committee has scheduled to, uh, a initial or first round of interviews with the applicants for June twenty-seventh, Thursday, and June twenty-eighth, Friday.
That's only for the ad hoc committee, though, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
And then, um, the recommended, the final applicants recommended by the ad hoc committee will be interviewed tentatively in front of full council on Friday, July twelfth. But, um, the ad hoc committee is also considering adding one more interview date for those that are out on vacation or not available for June twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth. Um, to be interviewed on Friday, July fifth, in the morning.
Thank you.
Were there any other reports?
No.
No, okay. Moving on to item fourteen, council items separate from the city manager's regular agenda. Councilmember Sternquist.
Um, just want to tell Susan again what a great job she's done on the budget, made it very easy to read. And appreciate you spending a couple of hours with me going over, um, it. Um, I don't think I have anything else other than I'm looking forward to our first concert.
Me too.
That's it.
Excellent.
And again, my condolences to all the sheriffs. I know that the sheriff is a very, um, sheriff's department is a very close-knit family. And so our prayers are with all of, um, their fam- his family and all of you.
Councilmember you?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. I would just echo what, uh, Councilmember Sternquist just said. Condolences to the sheriff's department. It was, uh, actually, I was kind of following that because that jacket of mine is just right next door to my office. Yeah, so, and, um, and I saw the traffic diversion and all that, so I've been kind of following that. So felt really sad about that because we, I personally work with the sheriff department in my regular day job, so. Um, but anyways, I also wanted to congratulate, uh, the city manager and director Paragis and actually all the, all the, all the directors of department heads. We're putting together a, a good budget that we can work on. And in particular, I want to appreciate, um, the thought of looking into the future. Instead of just approving one budget, one year from year to year, we actually have somewhat of a mated attempt to look into the future. Create our own, um, uh, uh, crystal ball to try to anticipate in particular. Um, the potential coming economic issues that we all, the cities are facing. And, uh, we're not alone in this. And, uh, people heard about cities, uh, passing sales tax and measures and all that. And I think I appreciate that you, you, you bring this to our attention and help us to, um, make provisions for that, so. Thank you.
Councilmember Mann?
Thank you, Mayor Fish. Yes, I also appreciate, uh, all of staff's work on the budget. Uh, I thought it was well put together, very informative. It was easy to follow. Um, my, my favorite is always the, the CIP multi-year projection. Cause when, when it's put in that format, you realize how much we need to do, how much we want to do. And then realistically, how much we can actually accomplish, given all the different constraints and unknowns. Uh, so being able to try to, uh, look, look at that and in the framework of, of more than just the, the year in front of us. I think it's, it's a good practice. We should continue. Uh, just a quick question. Tomorrow at the concerts, we also have a Primrose Park booth? Just a quick question, tomorrow at the concerts, we also have a Primrose Park booth, is that correct?
Thank you for reminding me, Councilmember Mann. Yes, tomorrow, we will be continuing the outreach that we started a couple weeks ago related to seeking the community's input in terms of, it won't be the same exercise that they went through during the June first meeting, but just more of soliciting input about what people like to see, what they don't wanna see at the site, but not the same exact exercise that we did on that Saturday morning, but just an opportunity for people to see and talk to staff and the consultant to see, you know, give us some input about what they're looking for at the Primrose site.
And where is this meeting?
Yeah, we will, we will just have a booth at the, we'll just have a booth at the concert.
Okay, good, I was gonna suggest that you should use the concert as a.
It's tomorrow.
Tomorrow, at the concert.
Thank you.
Thank you for reminding me, Councilmember Mann.
And last but not least, my heartfelt condolences to Deputy Solano, his family, as well as the entire Sheriff's Department. An attack on any member of the Sheriff's Department is an attack on us here in Temple City as well, so we stand in solidarity with you and really appreciate the fact that you guys are holding that fundraiser or a way to help. Because everyone always asks, well, what can I do, what can I do? And then here is a very tangible, visible way for us to show that we can come together and do our best to to resolve, or not resolve, but to try to help with what, from my perspective, it's a senseless tragedy. It's a tragic thing, and we would never wish that to happen to anyone from our deputy family, so, so, yeah. We will, we will be there for that tomorrow, thank you.
How is this being publicized? Do we know?
There's a flyer.
Are we gonna have any?
Yeah, there was a flyer going around.
Is there anything else other than Facebook that people will know about this?
Star News just.
Like signs out there or something?
We pushed it out, in fact, the sheriff tweeted it out, so.
I don't tweet either, so.
He's sent it to email to me.
So people are tweeting.
I know, tweet, tweet.
Whatever.
Old fashioned.
And it's really on Twitters, I'm sure.
People will show up.
It's grown legs rather rapidly, so.
Now, my understanding in the initial email that we received was that it was gonna start at eleven, eleven-thirty, but it was only gonna last as long as the food held out, so.
So I spoke to.
Considering if it's getting a lot of leverage, that could be earlier than later, maybe, I don't know.
It could be, but, you know, they prepared for quite a large response, so. We also expect.
I'm hoping that they could take advantage of our, of our park crowd, the concert crowd.
And we've reserved some spots, the media has shown interest, so I'll get a public information sponsor there as well, so. We're expecting a big crowd.
Great.
Thank you.
Will the sheriff be there?
There's a good possibility he will, and the undersheriff also reached out to me today for information, so. There's a good possibility he'll be there.
Thank you. Thank you. Mayor Potem?
Thank you. Just a couple items for a quick, again, I would like to echo my colleagues' statements regarding the city budget. Thank the city manager, and of course, all our department heads. It's not easy these days to balance a budget, let alone have a surplus. So it takes quite a lot of effort and thinking and good work. And also, thank you for coming here and listening to us. That's not easy either, sometimes I can understand that, and, you know, taking our comments and, you know, and doing what you need to do, so thank you very much. Lastly, I would like to mention, and of course, our condolences go to Deputy Solano's family, of course, but we also lost a true Temple City, you know.
Icon.
Icon, yes, you could say, thank you. Jackie Milham, some of you may know the name, wife of Al Milham, who was very involved with the Kiwanis Club and Little League Baseball, and they moved here in nineteen fifty-five, lived in Temple City ever since. Danes, I think it is, isn't it, Jerry? Is it Danes, yeah, lived in the same home. She was very involved in Kiwanis, Women's Club, you name it, she was involved in it. I did learn something today, her service was this morning. I didn't realize this, Jerry probably remembers, but apparently, this was before my time, but Al and her would ride down Las Tunas before the Camellia Parade honk with a speaker on top of his car, announce, a what?
A city van.
Oh, it was a city van, announcing that the parade is coming.
Really cute.
That would be something. When did they stop doing that? Do you remember, Kathy? I don't, because I don't remember that, but, oh, in the eighties, that, yeah.
That's when I went to Rosewood.
Oh, okay. So I thought that was pretty interesting, but there were a lot of nice stories shared about her today, great woman. I knew her very well, not only through Little League, but I remember the first time I ran for city office, and you know how we always put the signs up, and I remember getting a call from her. She's kinda mad at me, she's like, how come I don't have a sign in my front yard? So, of course, I rushed over there to put a sign on her front yard, and she was pleased about that, but very good lady. You know, Al passed away a number of years ago, and she's got a great family, great, great, great grandchildren, and ninety-five years old, but she was sharp as a tack. Some of you remember, five years ago, we celebrated her ninetieth birthday up here at the Women's Club. And so, yeah, she's, we're gonna miss her, and she was a really good part. So I would respectfully ask Mayor Fish to perhaps close our meeting in her honor tonight, if you don't mind. And that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. I have a couple things. First of all, Brian, can you announce, besides tomorrow night, when the other Primrose meeting is?
The other Primrose meetings, I will get, sorry, just, my computer just. I can get those, we'll make sure to either get those out on social media or otherwise.
Okay, and are the neighbors going to be notified of those again, or were they notified in the first application?
Most of them signed during the first meeting, the meeting on June first, most of them signed up who were interested. We won't be necessarily doing another flyer distribution as well, but those who were in, who were part of that initial initial activity will be informed about, they know about the follow-up meetings as well.
Okay, what helped me was the Facebook, it was on Facebook. Can we make sure that it's on Facebook again, just because I'm able to share it and then other people share it? And I know we don't have newspapers now.
We'll do some additional social media.
Thank you.
You know, one thing, with the Facebook, I notice on the city, like, you're not able to share something that they post, so.
Yeah, you can.
I've always had to copy, like, take a picture of it, but you can just share from their website?
You can just share from, yeah. We can help you.
Okay, thanks.
Also, of course, like to give my condolences to the Sheriff's Department. Being a member of the law enforcement family, it's very close to my heart when I see someone who's taken away senselessly and who has a family and who, you know, gets up in the morning, goes to work, and doesn't come home. It's very tragic, so I know I will be there, I know a lot of my council members will be there tomorrow, so you can count on us. And yes, please, keep us informed of further Sheriff Department events and fundraisers, because, believe it or not, we do like to go to them, so, thank you. Budget, thank you for your budget. I have to say, it seems to be either I'm learning more or it gets easier, because like Councilmember Mann said, they're pretty easy to understand. I mean, we, when we're reading it, we are reading between the lines lots of times. So I appreciate, I appreciate all the time that you spend, Brian, also, I know Brian loves budgets, so, thank you, Brian. And of course, our directors. I'm very excited tomorrow about our concerts. We have ten concerts this year, correct?
I think eleven.
Eleven, okay, eleven. And I also wanted to remind everyone that we have other events for the summer. We have Movies in the Park, which I believe are on Thursday nights.
Thursday nights in August.
Thursday nights in August at Leboeck Park. And then we also have Campalooza, which is, I don't know.
It's my nineteen twenty or eighteen, I'm like.
Okay, which is, oh my goodness, okay, well, I'll be there, but I won't be spending the night.
And Bark in the Park.
And Bark in the Park.
Doggy fashion show, my dogs are in.
Excellent. And we are also going to have a city hall open house, July seventeenth?
It's just, it is just kind of a basic open house, it's not, it's not meaning to replace anything, it's just something different. Just allows the members of the public who are here for the concert to come to city hall, meet. We're still formulating the program, but it will be just maybe a brief, five or ten-minute presentation by each department, and they can talk to staff. We're still formulating. It's not meant to supplement anything or replace any other programs we've done now or in the past, just something a little bit different.
And it is July seventeenth, correct?
Yes, that's the target date we're doing, we're trying to combine it with a concert.
Okay, thank you. And that is it. I would like to go ahead and adjourn tonight's meeting in memory of Jackie Milham. I did have the honor of knowing her very well. Her granddaughter played softball with my daughter. So I sat in the bleachers through many games with her and listened to lots of stories about her being at the park for probably the last forty years. She was a very sweet, sweet woman, and she volunteered for many organizations. She was a true part of this community, so, again, I'd like to adjourn the meeting on her behalf.
Mayor Fish, just one more, one more additional public comment period?
Oh, okay, sorry. I'm already going home, I told you. Additional public comments?
Primrose Park, follow-up meeting on Monday, July eighth, six-thirty P.M. in the community room.
Thank you, Jerry.
And Parks and Recreation will be discussing it on Wednesday, July seventeenth. And you will be voting on it, hopefully, on Tuesday, July thirtieth, but we don't know, so. Anyway, that's the information that I have.
Thank you, Jerry.
You're welcome.
I'm sure it's correct.
One more quick comment regarding the donations. If someone wants to write a check, the check would be made out to the Temple Station Unit Fund. It's not a five oh one C three, it's just a donation, but a check would go, Temple Station Unit Fund.
Unit Fund.
Yeah, and then we will gather that money and distribute it.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other additional comments? Okay, again, I'd like to close the meeting on behalf of Jackie Milham. Good night.
Thank you, man.